And now recording. And we are now live. We're live, Russ.
I know, I'm just waiting to see all the attendees come in. All right, I, um... We had some more participants come in. Uh, okay.
Just to let you know, we could see through that, so FYI.
See through what?
Our little sheet there, flag.
Oh, okay. All right, um, I'd like to make an announcement here this evening. This meeting, although it said that it would commence at 6:30, there was a problem with the notice. So this meeting will be starting at 7:30 tonight. Um, we were all, we're, so we're going to commence this meeting one hour from now. Um, you can log back on, you can stay logged on the whole time if you want. But we will be commencing the meeting in an hour. And I am going to, right now, I will be posting, um... On the screen, so you all now should see when you log on that the meeting will start at 7:30. Uh, I will come back on every, say, 15 minutes and make another announcement that the meeting will start at 7:30. Um, thank you, and we'll see you all at 7:30.
Everyone, please make sure you mute your mics so you don't pick up on any unintended audio that's recorded and broadcast. Thank you.
...
Finally took the President, accepted his help. But I don't know why it took him about three days, three nights of rioting and the violence and two deaths before speaking.
Thank you for your patience.
Nice to be at home.
Yeah, it is. Did you see my?
How do you get me on there?
Let me see.
I just sent it to Auntie Diane.
Can you hear me, Ron?
Yes, I can hear you.
All right.
Loud and clear.
All right.
Good job.
So far.
Yeah, I know. Just really can't see you.
I'll come.
Uh, we see your neck and your beard. Let's wait a few minutes, please, before we start talking. Everybody can hear you. Okay. Hey, I'd like to call to order the Wednesday, August 26, 2020, Planning Commission meeting. As you know, there was a mix-up on the, on the time, so we are starting it at, it is now 7:32. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
For which it stands.
One nation. Under God.
Indivisible.
For liberty.
And justice for all.
Okay, I forgot to do the roll call, so we'll do the roll call now. Mr. Mattson.
I'm here.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Rayes.
Yeah.
Mr. Kenny.
Here.
Mr. Poselli.
Yeah.
Secretary Lukowicz.
Here.
Vice Chairman Kalunian.
Here.
Chairman Flynn is here. Okay, number four on the agenda tonight is approval of the minutes, July 22, 2020 meeting. Can I get a motion for approving the minutes?
Motion approved, Carl.
I second it.
Okay, Carl's made the motion, Sandy seconded. Any questions on the minutes? Hearing none, I'll do a roll call. Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Rayes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mr. Poselli.
Aye.
Ms. Lukowicz.
Aye.
Mr. Kalunian.
Aye.
The Chairman Flynn says aye. Okay, minutes are approved. Okay, under number five, we have a project of reinstatement and a one-year extension request for Cedar Creek Phase Two, ASCO Group and Company. Applicant is requesting a reinstatement of a preliminary plan approval and a one-year extension of the same approval of a four-lot minor subdivision with a street creation, AP 318, Lot 172, Zone RR2, it's Providence Place, and it's on Hill Farm Road. Anybody here representing the applicant?
John Brunaro.
Hi, John.
How you doing?
Hi, John.
Hi. I'm too old for this, but I've been able to overcome this, signing in with Zoom. Hopefully, it's my first and last. Any event, the reason we're here, we completed, my client completed the, the road, put all the electrical in, put the fire sesterne in, and has actually filed the cash bond with the planning department. When it came up as to what was on the final plan, there was some confusion. There were two phases to this project, the phase you have before you now, and going back to the original one, my client traded off a 50-foot right-of-way for some acreage that went over to the town. At that time, your solicitor and I had a plan that was recorded by DePree, and that plan allowed us to convey the four or five acres over to the town, which added to the Providence Place playground area. The long and the short of it is, when your town planner was going over the final plan that the pre had sent to the town, there were things on that that should have been eliminated due to the fact that the deeds have already been recorded conveying the property to the town. Additionally, Russell pointed out, because this was being dealt with by the former associate planner, Mr. Wagner, with DePree, that the fire sesterne was shown, but there was no easement for it. And basically, we, okay, basically, we were in a position that because of the COVID, could not get DePree Engineering to complete the plans to comply. So I spoke to Russell, we actually went and met with Russell, and I thank him again for taking the time, because it's difficult to try to look at these plans and see what you're talking about unless you have them right in front of you. Unfortunately, I have not been able to do that, the pre, they're, with the pre, they're working remotely, and hopefully, I should have this done within the next several weeks. That being said, we're beyond the time that, which was allowed for the recording, so I'm respectfully requesting the commission reinstate the project and grant us whatever you feel would be an appropriate extension for us to record the final MYLO.
Okay, John, anybody on the board have any questions before I ask for a motion? Hearing none, can I get a motion for, looks like a one-year project reinstatement and a one-year extension?
I'll make, I'll make that motion to extend it.
A motion by Carl, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Mr. Poselli. Any, and I'll do a roll call as we try to make this a little easier for the, the, the audience. Mr. Mattson.
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye.
Mr. Rayes.
Aye.
Mr. Kenny.
Aye.
Mr. Poselli.
Aye.
Ms. Lukowicz.
Aye.
Mr. Kalunian.
Aye.
Chairman Flynn also says aye. So you're good to go, Carl.
Thank you, stay safe and healthy, guys and girls. Thank you again.
Thank you.
You too, John.
Good night.
You too, John.
Night.
Okay, next on the agenda is number six, it's a recommendation to zoning board of review. It's for a special use permit for 333 Reed Schoolhouse Road. Owner and applicant Christine E. Diambra. Proposed construction of a 20 by 24 by 24 seven addition to a non-conforming structure. It's AP 74 Lot 5, Zone RR2. Anybody here representing the applicant?
Dean, I'm here.
Hi.
Hi.
Yeah, if you just want to give us a quick preview on what you're trying to do, the board has the, the set of plans.
Yep, um, so what we'd like to do is, to the right of the house, if you're, if you're staring at the house, to the right, we'd like to put a 20 by 24 great room on the first level, and then above that, the same 20 by 24 bedroom upstairs. Right now, the, the house is really small, it's really old, there's no closets in the house at all. So we're just, we're trying to stay here, I, I'm trying not to move from the house. So what I'd like to do is just make it work a little bit better for us, have a real master bedroom with closets. I don't even have a closet in my bedroom right now, so, um, just, you know, trying to make a little bit more room. Also, the kitchen's real tiny, so in the great room, we wanted to also put a little bit of a pantry in there so that we could have a little bit more storage in the kitchen as well. That's it, we're just trying to add a little bit more square footage to the house. We're, I'm getting married in May of next year, so.
Congratulations.
Thanks. So we're just trying to make it work a little bit better for us, so we don't have to move.
Okay, I noticed that some of your buddy neighbors put in some pretty good letters for you that I don't see anybody disapproving of it. It is a non-conforming lot, I'll, anybody on the board have any questions? Nobody on the board?
I do, I, I couldn't unmute my mic, sorry.
Okay, I know what you're gonna ask, Rick, but I'll let you ask.
What, what am I gonna ask?
You're gonna ask about the septic.
I was gonna ask.
I know.
I did notice, though, and I, I think it's kind of a gray area because there's a conversion on the first floor, I think, from a bedroom to a den. Did you say one of these rooms doesn't have a closet?
Yeah, so, um, what I want to do is, because my kitchen is, is very small,
I want to convert the current living room into a dining room, because we, we don't have a dining room, we actually don't even have room to put a table and chairs.
How many bedrooms are you gonna have, how many bedrooms do you have now and how many are you gonna have after?
Two, we have two now, we'll have two then. So what we're doing is, we're removing one of the bedrooms downstairs to make that into, and like a den office, because we're removing the living room, the current living room right now, and making that a dining room.
But is that room gonna have a closet?
No, I was told I would actually have to remove that closet, which is totally fine, I don't have a problem with that at all, and the door, that's not it.
Yeah, I, I don't know what kind of septic system you have on your property now, if it was only approved for two bedrooms, it's an issue. If it's already approved for three bedrooms and you have three bedrooms in the after, it's not an issue. But I was just gonna make sure that you just verify with, with either the building official or DEM.
It's a, it's a two-bedroom septic.
Okay.
It is, we actually put the sep, well, the contractors that I purchased this house from put the septic in at the time we purchased the house. And I learned through all of this that it was actually a two-bedroom septic that was put in to the house. So I don't have any other alternative but to keep it a two-bedroom house, which is actually fine, because that's really, that would work for me.
Okay. It works for the building official, it works for me. The second, the second item that I had, it was just something I noticed, it's not a problem with your application, but I just want to make sure you're aware of this. You have beautiful drawings of what's going to take place with the, with the home, but there's a sketch in here. It's a plot plan, I don't know who did that for you.
The dra, the drafter did.
Who?
The drafter that made the plans.
Because, because when I went on the Town Geographical Information System, and they have an aerial photography. and they have an aerial photog, uh, an aerial photograph of your property and the property lines, and there's a measurement tool in there.
Mm-hmm.
And they're showing that little, uh, bump out from your property, um, to be 45 feet from the property line. And if you deduct 20, that puts you closer than 17 feet. So I just want to make sure you, you, you are, you have in fact located that property line. It doesn't impact this application because you're asking for more relief than you might need, but I just wanted you to be aware of that in case they ask you to clarify.
Okay, and we're actually removing that bump out that will come right off the house.
Right, but that is no barren. If, if you take a measurement from where that bump out is to the property line, and it's 45 feet now, and, and you're only adding, uh, 16 feet, that means you're, you're actually gonna be 30 feet from the property line, not 17.
The measurements were taken from the actual, uh, side of the house where the addition would be. We, we pretended like the bump out wasn't there when we.
How did you locate the property line between yours and your neighbor's property?
My neighbor had a survey done, um, so he and I went out there and there's, there's, um, poles that are between the, the property lines. So we went out there, we just made sure that we were both in agreement with it. That was Tom Gollan, um.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I, I only went on because I wanted to see how close this addition was gonna actually be to the house. And when I took out the measurement tool, it appeared to be there was an error in the location of the property line based on the town's GIS system and the location of your dwelling. I'm not sure which is accurate. If your neighbor said he had his property surveyed and you believe that, that's fine. If you want to rely on the GIS, that's fine. You've asked for more relief than, than would have been necessary if the property lines in the wrong, wrong location. So I don't have an issue with it, I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay, good to know, thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Any other questions from the board? All right, hearing none, I'll, uh, entertain a motion for a recommendation to zoning for a special use permit.
Ron, I'll, I'll, I'll recommend the motion.
All right, as a motion made by James Kenny.
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Reyes. Um, and I'll go through a roll call again. Mr. Mattson.
Hi.
Mr. Ozinkowski.
Hi.
Mr. Anderson.
Hi.
Mr. Reyes.
Hi.
Mr. Kenny.
Hi.
Mr. Poselli.
Aye.
Ms. Lukowitz.
Aye.
Mr. Kalunian.
Aye.
Mr. Flynn also says aye. So you have your recommendation to zoning.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Welcome.
Thank you very much.
Should I remain on the call or am I done?
If you want to have a very interesting night, you can remain. You're all done, Christine, you can go.
All right, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Are you a hockey fan or not?
I am.
Okay, next is a public informational meeting continued from July. It's master plan, Covington Road Solar. Owners Covington Realty LLC and Rockwood Realty LLC. Applicant Revity EPC LLC. Proposed 5.3 megawatt DC solar energy project AP 85 lots one in 5.3 and AP 92 lots one. It's in an RR2 zone and it's addressed at zero Covington Road. Not sure if that's the correct address, but that's what it says here. Um, we never closed public hearing, so, uh, staff, I think we'll go right into public hearing. Any of the public want to speak?
Ron?
Yes.
I'd like the, um, I believe you should turn it over to the legal counsel for the, uh, for the applicant at this time.
Okay, we'll turn it over to the applicant, we'll do a quick overview.
Yeah, I believe he wanted to present more witnesses.
Okay, no problem. Go ahead.
Good eve. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Robert Murray, 21 Garden City Drive in Cranston. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, Mr. Murray.
Very good, thank you. Uh, yes, just very briefly, first of all, we, we appreciate the time that the, uh, commission spent last month on this. I know it was a lengthy hearing and, uh, a lot of public comment. Um, in the intervening weeks, what, uh, I was hoping to do was just to share with the commission and the public some additional information. We tried to reflect on the comments that we heard from the commission and, uh, members of the public and tried to supplement, uh, uh, your, uh, your record, uh, and our application with some additional information which, which we think, uh, would be helpful. Um, yeah, it's not my intention to, uh, spend a long time on these, but with your permission, I'd just like to go through several witnesses, and, uh, you've all received, uh, uh, copies of the information, uh, in binders that we shared with Mr. Crossman, uh, and I believe those documents are also, have been shared online with the public. Um, uh, with your permission, I'd like to have first, uh, David Russo from DePree Engineering, who testified last month, uh, just talk about a couple of the additional pieces of information we shared, uh, with you. David, are you on, on the line okay?
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes.
David.
David, we, we presented to the, uh, board, uh, several, um, documents or plans that your office coordinated, uh, and I just want to go through them, um, briefly. Um, since the, um, the, uh, last meeting, uh, your office has put together a plan which we've labeled as test hole location plan. And, um, could you, uh, briefly, um, summarize that plan and what the, what the intended purpose was? Just so we can share with the commission this evening.
Sure. Uh, Dave Russo, professional engineer with DePree Engineering, uh, to Stafford Court, Cranston, Rhode Island. So we created a, uh, a test hole location plan. Uh, we, as a firm, uh, before we do engineering design, are required to do, uh, test holes or soil evaluations, uh, mostly for the drainage components on the site. Uh, due to the, um, the concern of the ledge and the soil conditions on the site, uh, we did the drainage testing and we also did some exploratory test holes on the site. And when we do those, uh, we use an excavator, we dig down 10 to 12 feet, and we have a licensed soil evaluator, uh, that reviews those holes, uh, for the purpose of, uh, depth to groundwater and depth to any refusal or, uh, ledge. And, uh, what we found on this site was on the north end of the site, uh, the test holes that we did in that area, we did not find any ledge in the north end. Uh, on the east side of the site along Covington Road, uh, there was no ledge present, uh, in that area. As you move south, uh, to Watercrest, uh, there was a test hole 14 had approximately a depth to five feet, uh, to ledge. And then the south area where you see test holes eight, 11, 12, 13, and 10, uh, excuse me, nine. Um, we tested in that area because there was, uh, some visible, uh, outcrops or large rocks in that area. And, uh, the ledge in that area, there was some surface ledge, uh, there's four feet down. There's one that was 18 inches down. Uh, so we did, did run into ledge in that area. However, uh, looking at, uh, the topography in that area and historical images of this property, uh, this area was, looked like it was part of a prior gravel operation. So it's our assumption that during that operation, material, uh, was removed, uh, from this area. Uh, so that's probably the reason why there's, uh, less depth to ledge. And when we do a, uh, solar development or a drainage layout, uh, with this particular site, that being a, a bowl per se, because of the prior work on the site, it's our opinion that that area more than likely will actually need to be filled in versus cut. And the reason I say that is, uh, it's our goal when we do a drainage design to get as much of this water to the wetland, uh, area. Um, to be able to do that, uh, that area would have to be picked up and some of that water would have to be diverted to the west. Um, so that area, a- as we look at it without having to design, it's our opinion that, um, you know, I don't believe blasting would be needed in there. If it were to be needed, it'd be very minimal at most. Um, and then as you go to the west side of the site, uh, we did some test holes over there. Um, the ledge in that area was, uh, you know, five to six feet range. Um, and then as you move further north on the west, that we didn't hit any ledge. Um, that area is where we're proposing to put some drainage in that area to discharge the wetland. Uh, so we don't expect to, to need to blast in that area for the drainage components. So that's a summary of the, the testing that we did on site.
Okay, uh, David, and so just so for the members of the board and the public who may be looking at this, so on your plan where you have the various test holes, for example, where it says test hole 10, it says ledge equals 72 inches, I believe. Just so I understand, everybody understands, are you saying that you went down 72 inches before you came to ledge? Is that what that means?
That means that they dug down, uh, dug down and they did not hit ledge until 72 inches down.
Okay, so that's what, that's what those notations on the, on the little white tabs, uh, on the various, uh, uh, it's, that's the depth to ledge that you discovered in those particular areas with the test holes.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just go through these plans and then Mr. Russo will be happy to answer any questions, uh, from you or the board. Um, David, the second set of plans that we, uh, shared, uh, with the commission for tonight's meeting is, um, at the request of, um, uh, the, uh, the applicant, uh, Revity Energy, um, you were asked to look at the existing subdivision regulations and if, uh, while this particular solar development is allowed use permit from the zoning board, if this were to be developed as residential, uh, house lots, um, you, you presented to the board this evening two conceptual plans, is that correct?
That is correct.
And, uh, just so we're clear, we, we use as a general guide in the design of these lot, the, um, uh, you know, we have available, we, you know, this, you know, we did not finally design these or fine tune them. Uh, this is, this is clearly a, these are conceptual plans, correct?
Yeah, the, these are conceptual plans. I would consider these, you know, close to a pre-application level plans.
Okay. So in the first instance that I'm gonna, I, I'm gonna just identify and then just ask you to go through them. Um, the first one, and I, I think this is the one that's on the screen, yeah, is, uh, what would be labeled a conventional yield plan, is that correct?
Correct, and these plans, the conventional yield plan is typically created, uh, to calculate the total density, uh, that could be yields from the site.
Okay, and I'm gonna ask you to talk about it in a second, but just for the record, the second plan that Russell will put on the screen momentarily is labeled cluster development plan, and that is a different configuration using, uh, cluster development, uh, concept, correct?
That is correct.
So just for the board and the public, just highlight the, the cluster, uh, the conventional yield plan's on the screen right now. Just, just give a brief overview of that.
So the, uh, the conventional pla, uh, plan that we did follows the, uh, the underlying zoning of the, uh, subdivision regulations in the town. Uh, as I stated, this plan is generated to show how many lots the property could yield. And from this plan, the cluster plan is developed, and that cluster plan, uh, shows, uh, 14 residential lots using the cluster, uh, subdivision regulations. Uh, in that, uh, development, you know, obviously, uh, as shown on the plan, has a shorter road. Uh, it has frontage lots on Covington Town, and there's an open space component to it that's required by the, uh, subdivision regulations.
Okay, again, um, and we, we have labeled 14 lots here and what would be a, as you said, a pre-application stage, uh, uh, conceptual layout. Um, my question, uh, in, in, uh, in reviewing these, um, you and I discussed, uh, because blasting was a discussion point last, last time. Uh, and I know previously with the testo locations, you've identified what you, in your opinion, uh, very little need to blast if, if at all. Uh, but with respect to your experience, uh, as a designer of subdivisions, excuse me, um, are there instances where possibly more blasting could be involved with a residential development versus, say, a solar development? And if so, in what circumstance?
In my opinion, based on my experience, I've done a lot of residential development throughout the state, and my opinion is that there, there potentially will be more blasting needed for residential development, and that's strictly because of the, uh, construction of the roadway, the utility installation, uh, home foundations, uh, septic systems, which all require, um, you know, excavation. Whereas the solar development, you do have a lot more flexibility with the grading of the site. And, um, you know, there's no, you know, they, they're trying to avoid, um, you know, that excavation because at the end of the day, they're installing posts in the ground and those posts could, could if needed be screwed into the ledge. So there's, there's more flexibility with the solar, um, in, in terms of the blasting.
Okay. Um, the last plan that, uh, we asked you to prepare, um, was, is labeled, uh, interconnection route. Uh, this came up, uh, a couple of the neighbors asked the last time in July when we were here. Um, and your office at the direction of Revity Energy, uh, prepared, uh, this plan that's on the screen right now. One's labeled interconnection map one, the other one's interconnection map two. Could you briefly, uh, explain what those, uh, depict? And, uh, so the public and the board can understand, uh, uh, what we're looking at?
Sure, so this is a, um, an interconnection plan. We, uh, DePree Engineering doesn't do these designs per se, but we work with Revity. Um, Revity works with National Grid and a consultant. Um, on these designs, w- we put it on the map to try to depict, uh, where that route is. And on this map, on the bottom inset, uh, interconnection map two, on the bottom right, you can see the solar development, um, in that, uh, gray. Uh, and then underneath that, uh, excuse me, to the right of that, you can see the entrance roadway. And the point of interconnection for this project would be right at that entrance or intersection with Covington Town Road. And the red line that's shown would be the, uh, this phase three extension of the overhead wires. Uh, there's already extensive, uh, existing three-phase wires, which is shown in the blue. So in general, the plan that we've provided, the blue line is the existing three-phase. The red line is the extension of the existing three-phase to the solar development.
So the last time we, uh, we went, uh, before the board, you know, we talked about that, uh, solar facilities like this do require the three-phase service as opposed to single-phase service from, with National Grid. And there is, you know, it appears there's already an extensive network of three-phase service, uh, in the Covington Town Road area, is that fair?
That's correct.
And, but the red line on interconnection map two does show that portion of Covington Town Road where, uh, the three-phase service would have to be extended.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, that was the extent of what I was hoping to have Mr. Russo share with the board. Uh, I don't know whether you want to ask any questions right now while, he's gonna stay available, but I didn't know if you wanted to, uh, uh, have the board ask any questions right now or, or you want me to just proceed forward?
Uh, I think what we've been doing is, uh, at, at last meeting, we, the board is refraining until, um, we hear from the public.
That's fine.
We want to continue, uh, with the public speaking.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
If you just give me a second, I'd like to bring in, I noticed, we don't, I would like to bring in the stenographer to make sure she's all set. She's on as an attendee and not a participant. I want to bring her in now, talk to her and make sure she's all set.
Absolutely.
So just bear with me a minute, please.
Hey, take your time, Russ.
Hi, everybody, I'm good to go.
Are, you're all set now?
All set, thank you very much.
Okay, I just, we didn't talk with you, I wanted to make sure you were able to get what's happened so far in the meeting?
Everything so far, I was on at 6:30 for a few minutes for you guys, and then I came back on at 7:15 and I've been on ever since.
All right, Heather, thank you.
Very welcome.
Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, ma- Thank you, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, may I proceed to?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, I I should have at the outset. And I apologize to the board and my client. I want to note for the record that Mr. Ralph Palumbo from Revity Energy is on on the call and joining the meeting. As well as Lindsay McGovern, the Vice President of Revity and a couple of other members of Revity Energy, so I I apologize for not noting their presence at the beginning of the meeting. But they they will be available to answer questions as we proceed here. Russell, if possible, there's a gentleman, Andy Dufour, who is the, there's a gentleman, Andy Dufour, I think is an attendee. And
Bob, you want me to bring him in?
If we could, please, he's going to be the next person to testify.
Okay, do I need to supply any supporting materials with him?
No, no, I don't believe so.
All right, because I I will be, I'll be gone for the next five minutes, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, no, I I don't think that's essential, the board has the plans.
Okay.
Andy, can you hear me?
I can.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, this is Andy Dufour, his name is spelled D U F O R E for Heather's benefit. Mr. Dufour has been invited to join us this evening. At the last meeting in July, I think it's fair to say there was considerable questions and discussion about blasting. And I asked Mr. Dufour to join us to give the commission and members of the public a general overview of blasting based on his experience and his company's experience. So with your permission, I'm going to introduce Andy and Andy, just for the record, could you just briefly state your name and and your title with main drilling and blasting?
My name is Andy Dufour, I'm a division manager at our office at 296 West Street in Milford, Massachusetts.
And how long you've been with main drilling and blasting?
Fifteen years.
And for the benefit of the board and the public, could you briefly describe what main drilling and blasting is and what what services you provide?
Yeah, that's pretty much all in the name, and it's named main because that's where we started back in 1966 in Gardner. Since then, we've grown, we're the biggest blasting company in the Northeast with offices down into Tennessee, so actually the Eastern Seaboard. We primarily drill and blast, we do a little foundation drilling work with with rock acres and such, but drilling and blasting is our specialty.
Okay, and, you know, we want to acknowledge right up front that you have not yet had an opportunity to visit the Calvin Town Road site being proposed here in the town of Coventry, is that fair?
That's correct.
But at my request, you reviewed the plans that were prepared by Dupree Engineering, which is entitled the master plant submission. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And you and you understand that Revity Energy is intending and asking permission to construct a solar facility on this property on Calvin Town Road?
Correct.
And does your company have much experience working with solar developers or solar facilities?
Yes, we've done quite a few jobs, but like was previously stated, with any solar project, everybody tries to avoid blasting, and they really have that opportunity because they're really trying to work with the lay of the land and and get the best sunlight, so they're not fixed structures such as a roadway or foundation. So we do have quite a bit of work both in the in the blasting and we've also drilled the holes, which the previous gentleman was talking about for the for the anchors.
Thank you, so, you know, the, I also asked you to review the moment ago, Dave Russo from Dupree Engineering was reviewing the test hole data plan with the board, it was on the screen, and you also had an opportunity to review that, correct?
Correct.
And so you have a general understanding as well as anybody on the call tonight. Kind of the situation of where the solar panels are proposed and some of the subsurface information that was revealed in those test hole datas, is that fair?
That's fair.
What, you know, one of the things that we tried to share with the public and the board last month, and I thought you could, it's always better to have the professional do this. You know, and, you know, you have not, you're, just for the record, your company has not been engaged by Revity Energy at this point to do any blasting on the site. You're you're offering your consultant services this evening. And if at some point, you know, I want to just say for the record, you know, you may end up being a contractor on the site, but as as we speak right now, you're you're here tonight more in a consulting capacity, is that fair?
That's fair.
In in general terms, could you just give the the board and the public a sense what goes through, what process you go through in terms of investigating a site and the decisions that are made with respect to blasting?
Sure, it all starts with the pre-planning, and typically that's a stage we're at right now, which Mr. Murray and myself were just talking with, studying the plans, determining where the ledge is that needs to be removed and where it is in relationship to other structures in the area, meaning people's homes, infrastructure, those types of things. Once that's determined, we actually have to do pre-blast surveys for any structures within 250 feet of the blast zone. So once those are done, we will go to the state fire marshal to actually pull the blasting permit. So we are regulated by the Rhode Island State Fire Marshal, and they would be the ones who would issue us a blasting permit once we've met the conditions of that permit.
And just for the record, your company has done blasting in Rhode Island and you're familiar with the procedures that the Rhode Island State Fire Marshal requires in Rhode Island, is that fair?
Yes, we've done extensive work in Rhode Island.
Okay, and in terms of, you know, neighbors were concerned about the pre-inspection stage. You know, that that is something done routinely with all blasting projects, is that fair?
Yeah, that's correct, it's, you know, we, everybody needs to the pre, it's a precondition survey, so it's just documenting the existing conditions of your home. And the reason that's done, you know, if it's not done, you know, after the first blast, people are going to feel a vibration and then you're going to go start looking around your house and notice you have all sorts of hairline fractures, which were probably there before the blast, but that needs to be vetted up beforehand, so it's simply somebody walking around with a video camera and they're doing a narrated video of each room documenting inside and out of the home, the existing conditions.
And once you're, once you're finished with the pre-inspection process, you then get into the developing the strategy on what what amount of blasting would be necessary, is that is that the next step or?
Yeah, no, that is the next step, so once we've obtained the permit and, you know, we're ready to go, we need to determine the blast design, so it's got to be the correct design for the area. I mean, we've got to understand the depth of rock, where the blast is, like you said earlier, and distance to the to the structures. The geology type plays a role, we need to know how many pounds of explosives per cubic yard of of rock it's going to take to fragment the rock to where it's diggable. And then when we have that information, we actually do vibration estimate calculations. So the state does have a threshold of vibration that we're allowed to have at these residential structures or any structure for that matter. And that threshold is actually where damage would be caused to cosmetic cracking to lay the plaster construction or the weakest construction material. You know, we'd be ready to to start the actual work, which would be drilling the holes in the ground.
So so the state regulates the, is it, is the proper characterization the vibration limits, is that, is that the?
That's correct, yeah, there's actually two measurements, that's the one that you can calculate that that will really cause the damages, the vibration, so it's a it's measured in inches per second, so we do what we call a predicted peak particle velocity, and that'll that'll estimate that the peak particle velocity of the vibration, because it's not one steady level.
And the, so if you, do you, do you, do you use any type of seismographic instruments or to obtain data during the blasting process?
Yeah, we do, we do exactly that, we use a seismic graph, so we place that seismic graph at the closest location, the closest house to the blasting. And that will measure the the actual vibration created at that home. And there's a second measurement, which called, it's called air overpressure, but that's just the displacement of the air. So there's also a threshold we have to maintain on that as well.
So i- in layman's terms, the process of blasting is, once you determine that there is a need to blast, is it fair to say the first step is you you'd like drill holes into the ledge for the material, is that?
Yeah, we drill a series of of holes in the ledge and those are to to basically to put the explosives in. So once those holes are drilled, we'll put the explosives charges in the holes. The explosives charges won't be any more than six feet to the surface. The top six feet of that drill column will be filled with a three-eighth inch peystone essentially, an inert material as to lock the explosives in the ground and to make sure the path of least resistance isn't straight up, is to control the actual blast. And once the holes are loaded, they're actually, there's a series of blasting mats put on top of the blast and what these are, that's a, it's a 12 by 24 mat and it's made up of tires and wire rope. Each one of these weighs roughly 12,000 pounds, you know, so they have to be set with a big excavator. And, you know, they're they're overlapped on top of each other, so it's not just a single layer. And that layer of mats is, the purpose of that is to make sure nothing leaves the immediate blast zone, so there's no no material leaving the blast zone.
So that's to try and control any material leaving. What, in terms of notification on a given day, if if it was going to be a blast, is there a series of horns, how does how does the public become aware? What what's the communication with the public, if I could ask?
So there is regulation with with a signal and five minutes before the blast, it's three long horns. One a minute before the blast, it's two short horns. And then the blast will detonate and then the blaster will check and make sure everything detonated, and then one horn would be all clear. Meaning everybody can go back to work. On top of that, outside of regulation, you know, as a company, we have a notification, we could notify people either by email, text, or we can send out an automated call. So in the pre-blast survey process, we'll ask if people would like to be notified, you know, an hour before the blast. Some do, some don't, but if they do, we can actually send out notifications of when blasting will be taking place each day. And, you know, on top of that, initially, right before the blast, before each blast, we have on paper what's called a site security plan. So we actually document before, it's it's one of the most important, the most important thing we do. We need to determine how we're going to secure our blast zone to make sure there is nobody in harm's way when that blast detonates. So on paper, we actually sketch out where the blast is, where the points of egress and ingress are. And and we'll actually put sentries, we'll put guards at those locations that and the guards will communicate with radio communication between each other to make sure there's nobody within the blast zone before we detonate the blast.
Okay, the, in the plans that Dupree Engineering prepared and you reviewed, if you notice to the south, there is a residential neighborhood, it's it's identified as Watercrest Court is the immediate street to the south, and we have some homes on the eastern side along Calvin Town Road. You know, from your experience, has your company been involved in in blast situations in the same relative proximity to other homes like that or?
Yes, we've gotten much closer, we we actually blast for additions to schools, hospitals. So we we blasted adjacent to it, just existing structures.
And is the, you know, one of the concerns of neighbors last month, as I recall, you know, people are just saying, you know, and I don't know if there are any wells in the area, but, you know, like their septic system or something like that. You know, is there any? You know, in your your experience, is there any adverse effect on things like that or?
Not being that far away, no, if it was in the immediate area, you know, 20, 30 feet, there might be an issue, but not not the distances we're talking. The vibration will decay. By the time it reaches these things, that the vibration decays at basically every doubling of the distance, so it has a very fast decay rate. And those seismic graphs, you know, we will measure what that is at those locations.
And the material that's in the ground, is there any way that it gets into the groundwater or, you know, what happens to the to the blasting material if there's anything left in the hole, if I can ask that question, if that's the right question?
Yeah, no, it is, so there's there's documents out there that it's put out by what's called IME, the International Materials of Explosives, and they have a, basically a document that we follow for housekeeping. So essentially, you've got to keep a clean blast site to avoid contamination. And that means making sure no explosives get outside the boreholes, making sure it's all in, and then making sure it's all consumed within the blast, so that's the that's the key, so you need to make sure you within within the column and that you have enough blasting caps and boosters that detonates the blasting agent, make sure it's all all consumed. And on top of that, any products we use, usually what's going to contaminate wells and things of that nature are chlorates. And we haven't used as a company any products that contain chlorates for well, I've been at main drilling 15 years and they'd stopped using it at that point, so we don't use any any products that contain full chlorates, which would be well contaminating material.
Okay, I I appreciate that overview. You know, I just felt that it would be helpful for the board and the the public to you know, hear from a tradesman on this issue, you know, but as we, as you said at the beginning, you know, blasting is a last resort, not a first resort, is that fair?
That's correct, in in solar fields, that's a common recurrence I've seen.
Mr. Chairman, I have no other questions to Mr. Dufour. Andy, I appreciate you making yourself available. The board may have questions later, Andy, if you, I know you're, I know you, if you could maybe just you can go do some other things, but if you if you might just stand available till we get through some of these other witnesses, I appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll be here, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Ron, could I say something?
Yes, absolutely.
Um, I'm a retired lieutenant colonel with the Army National Guard and my last 10 or 15 years in the service here in Rhode Island, I was in charge of all the major construction and there was a lot of construction. We had the opportunity to work with main blasting on Camp Fogarty with some extensive blasting. And we had homes that were closer to the area that's depicted in this proposal. And they were very professional, we had no issues, there were no adverse effects. And their notification process was above and beyond any of the regulations that were out there, so just to put everybody's minds at ease, maybe the public and stuff, I've actually dealt with these folks as a project engineer for the government. And they were very professional and they took everyone's concerns and went back to houses for inspections afterward and addressed any concerns that were there, so that's just an FYI for a personal experience.
Thank you, Mr. Kenny.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Mr. Murray.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just trying to keep this moving along for you. I believe I see on the screen Bob Hoffman from Hoffman Engineering and his colleague Eli Salisbury. In in your binder and with the the updated information we shared with the board, there is a short report and letter dated March 26, 2020, addressed to Revity Energy from Hoffman Engineering. Mr. Hoffman is just going to briefly discuss this. Can you hear me, Bob? Is he on mute?
I don't see him, Bob.
All right, he was there earlier.
I did see him earlier. I see Eli Salisbury.
Right, now I see Eli. Eli, could you maybe, can we maybe text Bob and see if he needs to reconnect? And I could, I could go on to another witness if it's all right with the chair.
Sure, no problem, Mr. Murray, continue.
Eli, if you could, just check with Bob, see if he can call back in and then Russell will queue him up and and we'll we'll move on to Sage Environmental. Uh, and uh, and we'll, we'll move on to Sage Environmental, um, and we'll come back to Hoffman. Um, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, I saw her earlier in the, on the screen and she's there, I, I do see her. Um, at the last meeting, um, there was some questions about the material of the solar panels. Um, you know, are they toxic? Do they cause problems uh, to the environment? Um, Revity Energy has engaged Sage Environmental uh, with, have local offices in Pawtucket. Uh, on the call tonight, you know, and on the screen is um, Nicole Milanefy. Uh, she's a professional engineer and you have a, a report, an extensive report from her uh, in your packet dated August fourteenth, two thousand twenty. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, just going to ask her to briefly talk about her report. Nicole, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can. Good evening, everyone, Nicole Milanefy, uh, Registered Professional Engineer in the state of Rhode Island. Um, I have um, a bachelor's degree in chemical engineering and master's in environmental engineering. And I've been working in providing chemical uh, and environmental consulting support for the last twenty years. Uh, so Revity provided me some details on the solar panel that they are intending to use for this project. By a company called Q cells. And and it's actually a new module for the company, it's going to be new to the market. Uh, but the equipment and the material of construction is similar to other modules. The reason it's, it's new is the way that it's designed. Um, they refer to it as being a gapless solar panel where um, it, it has all of the, the, the same metals and the glass and the aluminum frames. Um, just the, the layout's a little different. Uh, and so since it's
On the computer totally?
I'm sorry?
Sorry.
Um, it, so since it's new to the market, they didn't have the specific safety data sheet for the panel that's going to be used, but they gave for comparable one as well as toxicity data, they give that. So I reviewed that and evaluated what was made up of the panel and determined if there was any potential toxic impacts from an environmental perspective. Um, and so going through that, there, there was no potential contamination for groundwater or soil. And so um, in the packet that um, was provided to the planning board, um, a copy of the SDS, the safety data sheet and the toxicity data, which was um, provided as toxicity characteristic leaching procedure referred to as T clip. Um, that went through and provides the supporting documentation. Um, there was very small amounts of lead in there. Um, and what a T clip does, it's something that's used for determining if something is hazardous waste. And actually they take the material, they grind it up into really, really small pieces. And um, and then they determine if there's any components that leach out of there. So in a normal use of, of these panels, they're not going to be broken into these small um, particles. And so what that means is the looking at this toxicity data as a comparison to normal operation for it is very conservative approach of determining any potential impacts. And so um, looking at it from this conservative nature, we did not see any potential for um, contamination to, for, for the ground, for soil or, or groundwater. Um, I can go into, to more detail, a lot of it is contained in, in the report and, and the whole analysis. Um, but I, I can leave it to any questions that any of the public or the board members have.
That, thank you, Nicole. Uh, you know, your report is extensive and the backup material uh, speaks for itself. Uh, I know we're in a very highly technical area here. Uh, it was just my hope to, and you've achieved that, is just to um, allay some concern that we heard last month about toxicity of the panels and concern for soil or groundwater. And I, I think that your uh, experience and your analysis uh, is, is substantial in terms of uh, uh, addressing that issue. Uh, I just, you know, I, I just want to emphasize one thing. You, you know, you, your analysis, you know, made a general um, conclusion that, you know, these panels should not cause any environmental contamination to soil or groundwater. But through this process, they've, you know, you know, if somehow something were to hit the panel and break off uh, small pieces of metal, that's the very material that was analyzed, is that correct?
That is correct. And um, the way that the panels are constructed, there's a, a glass coating over them. And so the um, potential component that would be considered a contamination, which they're not at levels that would be of any concern, but where they are is underneath that glass. So something would have to break the glass and um, and it's in its solid form. So it's much larger than the size that, i- if you remember earlier, you're saying that they, they, when they do the toxicity analysis, they grind it up. Um, it gets ground up into, I have it in my notes, I think it's nine microns in size. Um, to a very small um, particle, which when you, if something were to happen to the panel, it would be much larger. And the smaller the particle it is, the, the more that it can um, leach out. So the fact that evaluating it at such small particle sizes and not having any toxicity concerns, um, that's why this is a very conservative analysis um, and demonstrating that there wouldn't be any contamination.
Okay, and my, my, my last question is, is one that I think a, a neighbor might ask. And, and you know, I certainly would as a lawyer, as, as not an engineer, you know, in short, if uh, the panels are erected uh, on the site uh, and through the course of weather, uh, snow, rain, uh, any, any material dripping off these panels into the ground, uh, we do, we do not anticipate uh, causing any type of contamination, is that fair?
That's a correct statement. And then on top of that, even if there was a crack in that glass coating, um, the developer has a notification system. So if there's a voltage loss, which would happen if there's a crack, they'd be notified so that they would then respond to fix that. So that even if there was a breakage in it, they would know and would be able to perform the necessary maintenance to, to resolve that. But even if that crack was present and it rained, there is no, based on the, the data provided from the SDS and the toxicity, there would not be any expected contamination.
Thank you, Nicole, that was uh, as, as we discussed earlier today, uh, uh, that was in my English, so I appreciate that. And uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I have no other questions of uh, Ms. Milanefy at this point. Uh, and with your permission, I'll move on to Mr. Hoffman.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Murray.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Bob, are you joining us now?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, for the record, you're up in Maine, is that correct?
Uh, yeah, with dial-up internet, so it's not great. But I tried calling in, I tried calling him, so I'm glad you can hear me. Eli Salisbury, who works for me, is in Rhode Island. And he witnessed the test pits, but um, just for the record, uh, this is Robert Hoffman, uh, I'm president of Hoffman Engineering, uh, been in business since nineteen eighty-eight. And I'm a registered Rhode Island professional engineer.
Thank you, Bob. Uh, at the request of uh, Revity Energy, um, you, you looked at the site on Covington Road in Coventry, is that fair?
Uh, yeah, we looked at it, we looked at the history, looked at the aerial photos and walked the site extensively.
And your, your findings or conclusions as a result of your investigation were presented in a letter dated March twenty-six, two thousand twenty, addressed to Lindsay McGovern of Revity Energy, is that fair?
Uh, yes, correct. We uh, saw a little bit of superficial evidence of um, some debris. So uh, Eli Salisbury from my office uh, witnessed a number of test pits just to see the nature and extent of that uh, superficial debris.
And, and that came about, you know, a, a month ago, and I know you weren't part of the, the meeting then. One of the, one of the uh, issues that neighbors and, and you know, everybody, oh, I'm not from Coventry, the chairman lives on Covington Road. There are people that are familiar with this property, which is commonly referred to as the LaCombe property. And there was some concern that historically, there's been some dumping or something on this property. Um, that, uh, you know, Revity Energy and uh, Covington Associates who bought the property um, were satisfied that there was no, no issues they needed to be concerned about. But that being said, you, your firm did, uh, I think your report stated you did conduct uh, approximately twenty-five test pits, is that fair?
Right, right. Um, Eli, Eli went out and witnessed a, a backhoe uh, that was supplied by the client. And we went around and the purpose of that uh, work is to see the depth and also the uh, nature of the material. And it was amazing, uh, the depth was less than twelve inches. And the material is some debris that uh, can uh, quite easily go to central landfill as uh, solid waste material. There was no evidence of oil or hazardous materials or any uh, soil or potentially groundwater contamination from any of the uh, material that we observed.
And the uh, the, just, just for the record, these test pits that you did are different than the test hole uh, locations that David Russo from DePret Engineering testified earlier, is that correct?
Yeah, correct. They, they went uh, de- deeper to identify a ledge. And, but we worked together on a lot of things, so if they, if they were to have found solid waste debris at depth or some other location that we didn't do test pits, we would have um, compared notes. But this was a pretty defined area and again, it was very shallow material on the surface, not indicative of a landfill where you would purposely dig it, dig deep, bury it or, or so forth, it was very shallow.
And you, you identified three areas in your letter, areas A, B, and C, as the areas that were uh, were tested with the uh, the test pits, correct?
Right, right, those were identified when Eli Salisbury and I believe Anthony Gomez from my office uh, walked the, the site in a grid. And those were the areas we identified and then we concentrated back on those area, areas.
And in the uh, in your report, there's a, there's a sketch attached entitled Site Plan, which uh, which has some red areas outlined as the approximate locations of area A, B, and C, is that correct?
Uh, that's correct.
And so when we, we look at the report, uh, if somebody's reading your findings described under area C, they can refer to that chart and see what area on the property you're referring to.
Yeah, that's correct.
And also just for the record, attached to your letter were, were some pictures uh, of uh, your typical uh, uh, test pits uh, of what you found, uh, just a random uh, sample of uh, the underlying uh, conditions, is that fair?
Yes.
And uh, without asking you to describe each area, I think you, you've done it in summary fashion. Did any one of these areas pose any uh, significant challenges in your mind over another?
Uh, no, no, in fact, um, I mean, we're pleasantly surprised. I mean, we, we worked, I've worked on thousands of sites now and uh, certainly at least a hundred landfill type of sites. And uh, this material was nowhere as like a landfill, it was just official material, which is, is nice. The volume is not very large.
And in, in, in your opinion, that, that material, once excavation started, could be easily removed and properly transmitted and disposed of?
Uh, yeah, yeah, basically it would be uh, uh, profiled and would go to central landfill, uh, which is frankly, the only solid waste facility in Rhode Island now.
I apologize, Bob, there was quite a bit of vibration on that, if you were talking, I apologize. Uh, my last question would be that um, in summary, uh, you didn't find any conditions that would suggest cars being buried on the site or uh, tires or any of that stuff based on your review, is that fair?
No, that's correct. It was all, it was all pretty inert material that can go to central landfill uh, very easily.
Other questions to Mr. Hoffman? Um, yeah, I know he's up in Maine, I, his associate, Mr. Salisbury, actually observed the test. With your permission, I'm going to excuse Bob and uh, Eli would be available uh, to answer any questions uh, later in the evening if uh, that develops.
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Bob, thank, thank you, Bob.
Thanks.
Uh, we're, we're almost done, Mr. Chairman. Um, uh, our next witness, and I saw him earlier on the screen, is Scott Rabideau from Natural Resource Services. Um, Russell, do we have him aboard?
I am here.
Oh, there you are, you're right in the middle, I apologize.
And uh, I am under Ralph Palumbo, so I truly apologize. I took the lazy person's way out and just clicked on the link that uh, they sent me to come in under Ralph Palumbo, so my apologies for that.
That, that, that's fine. Um, Scott, uh, could you just briefly introduce yourself to the board and the public?
Sure, and uh, for the court reporter, my name is spelled R-A-B-I-D-E-A-U, Scott Rabideau. Uh, I'm a wetland biologist, I'm the principal and the owner of Natural Resource Services, Inc. We're a wetland consulting firm up in Harrisville, Rhode Island. I've been practicing as a wetland biologist in the state of Rhode Island since nineteen eighty-seven. I've been doing uh, quite a few projects, I've done a number of projects in Coventry. It has been a long time uh, since I've testified before your planning board though, so it's good to see you all.
Thank you, Scott. Um, just, just for the record, it's separate and apart from what you want to talk about right now. Um, as part of our submission, uh, we uh, showed uh, areas that had been flagged uh, for wetlands purposes on the site. And just for the record, your firm performed those services, correct?
That is correct. We did the wetland delineation within the project area back in February of this year.
And you, you worked with DePret Engineering in producing that, those plans that are before the board this evening?
That's correct.
Um, at the last meeting in July, I know you weren't, uh, you didn't join us at that time. You know, there were some uh, questions from the public or comments about, you know, wildlife and the habitat area of the site and obviously people, you know, are concerned about disturbance of that. Um, at the request of Revity Energy, your firm under, undertook a, a habitat assessment. And uh, uh, that report was uh, uh, your, your findings or observations were uh, codified in a letter dated August twenty-first, twenty twenty, addressed to Lindsay McGovern of Revity Energy, is that correct?
That is correct.
Could you, for the benefit of the board, just uh, talk about your methodology and some of your conclusions? Uh, as you investigated, so I, first of all, you, you are familiar with the site on Covington Road, correct?
I am familiar with the site, I've had about ten hours on the site right now, so, yes.
And, and for the record, you are also familiar with the proposed plans to develop it as a solar array?
I am.
Okay, with that, with that groundwork, could you briefly uh, share with the board your analysis and your, your uh, your investigation?
And I, and I'll try to be as brief as possible, Mr. Chairman. But uh, you know, just so you, so you know, when, when we submit applications to alter wetlands in the state of Rhode Island, one of the biggest components of the DEM review is the effect the project will have on wildlife and wildlife habitat. So the information that I gathered on this site is very similar to any information that I would gather or my firm would gather for an application to alter to the DEM. Uh, what we try to do is get onto the site and not only identify the wetland habitat, but look at the upland habitats that exist on the site. And as you know, you know, this is a hundred and one acres in total, uh, with, with a much smaller project area. But as you know, wildlife just aren't on one piece of property, they, they travel. So then we look at an assessment area. And the assessment area is an area that is adjacent to the project area or the site and provides a contiguous naturalized habitat. So in this case, um, Covington Road, Road to the north, Flat River Road to the south and Reed Schoolhouse Road to the west. If, if you draw that triangle, that one big block, um, you've got about eleven hundred and thirty-four acres. You've got residences within it, but there's continuous contiguous habitat all contained within there. And that was my assessment area. And I use that because we're going to be altering and disturbing a certain amount of forested habitat on this property. How does that compare in relationship to the entire eleven hundred and thirty-five acres? And it turns out, it represents about two percent of the upland forested habitat in that eleven hundred and thirty-five acres. So it's, it's a of the upland forested habitat in that 1,135 acres. So it's a smaller percentage of the habitat that is available within the area for wildlife to use. The second thing is, you're trying to look at the value of the habitat. And you do that looking at the characteristics of the soil and the vegetation. The, and I know I submitted my report after the deadline. So I'm just going to try to go over this with you briefly. Both Mr. Hoffman and Mr. Russo spoke to the fact that the project area was previously disturbed. And I included an aerial photograph from 1981 in my report, where it kind of shows all of the area in question where most of the solar panels are going as being disturbed and utilized for gravel operation. So the vegetation that exists right now, that's first generation vegetation. We call it rudderel habitat, and it's primarily smaller, smaller white pines with a spattering of mixed hardwoods throughout. But it's in and around mounds of boulders, and there are cuts and fills in the area. So it's a very disturbed area. The western portion of the project area is a very nice mixed hardwood habitat with a very good, well-developed understory. So if you're trying to compare the eastern portion of the property in terms of value for wildlife habitat to the western portion of the property, it's a lower value as compared to the western portion. The eastern portion is not as valuable just because of that, the rudderel nature and the disturbed nature of the site. So, you know, in short, without going into tremendous detail, there's over 534 acres of forested mixed hardwoods. There's 900 acres, I'm sorry, there's 91 acres of pine-dominated forest. And there's 20 acres of this rudderel pine forest in total. So by us disturbing the 12.75 acres of forest, that represented about a 2% loss of that. And, you know, basically, my conclusion would be as part of an application that that is minimal. There is an effect on wildlife habitat, but it is minimal. And it's not, it's not anything that is going to be significant in that regard.
Thank you, Scott. You know, I think his report speaks for itself. And, you know, as members of the board may know, Scott is well-respecting the area. For all these people that have testified this evening, Mr. Chairman, I have provided resumes of their background and curriculum vitae, just for the board. And it's part of your binders that we shared with you. I don't have any other questions. And Mr. Rabidou, at this point, I'm trying to keep moving here. But Scott, thanks for your time. I just asked you to hang in for a little while, in case there are any additional questions.
Thank you.
We have two people left, Mr. Chairman. The first one's going to be very brief. Lindsey McGovern is Vice President of Revody Energy. I saw her earlier. She's probably under one of the Ralph Palumbo blocks on the screen. Lindsey, can you hear me okay? You might be on mute, Lindsey. Well, we're going to park her for a minute, Mr. Chairman, if it's all right. And we'll go to our last witness, and then we'll come back to Lindsey. Mr. Chairman, you were nice enough the last time in June. We had a report prepared by Edward Pimentel as a land use consultant. It's part of the record. And in probably three sentences, I attempted to summarize that report. Mr. Pimentel was not available that evening. He is in my office with me right now. With your permission, just for the record, I'd like him to just give the highlights of his report, just for the record. So it's coming directly from the preparer. And we'll do it in quick fashion, because I know you were nice. You were nice enough to let me speak the last time. I'm getting a message for me to unmute. Were you able to hear me, Mr. Chairman?
You were breaking up.
Okay. I was using Mr. Pimentel so that... Okay, I apologize. I think I fixed that. We're using my phone for sound, not the internet. I apologize. I was getting a message to unmute when I didn't have to. So Mr. Pimentel wasn't available last time. I just wanted to ask him to briefly summarize his report as a land use consultant, as related to the comprehensive plan, because that was a question that came up last month. And he'll just briefly do that. He's with me in my office right now. And I'll introduce Mr. Pimentel. He is a well-recognized land use consultant in the state. Mr. Pimentel.
The chairman, members of Planning Commission for this stenographer, the last name is Pimentel. P as in Paul. I-M-E-N-T-E-L. As we have background in regards to solar installations and solar developments, I probably have done somewhere between two and three dozen throughout this state of Rhode Island now, from very small, quite significantly large. I would contend that this is a moderately sized solar facility installation, both in scale and massing, as well as in occupation of the property, of the amount of quantity of land resources that are going to be used in relationship to the overall acreage. And the reason why this is very appropriate in that regard is we try to maintain, to the best of our ability, as much mature forested areas. We all understand that perhaps the primary concern with these rather passive usage of property is the potential visual intrusion. We understand that. Neighbors are concerned about the introduction of a solar facility installation. What are they going to be viewing post-construction? So our intent or our goal and objective is always to try to preserve as much as the buffer as we can of the forested mature trees and other vegetation. And then, of course, with the landscape architect and working with design to do some infill to mitigate to the best extent any remaining or residual view corridors. But that's always the intent, so that you preserve and protect the integrity and the character of the surrounding residences. At least from a land use perspective, that's always my objective. Just so, by the way, a quick background from a regulatory perspective. So what the state of Rhode Island is trying to accomplish is to try to provide a real balanced energy program, to try to back off on some of the dependency on fossilized fuels, and try to introduce more renewable energy. We've mapped the entire state for wind purposes. It's not as productive as we think it could be. Solar is really the renewable energy that we could really utilize to try to meet this balance program. But instead of the state preempting local communities' rights, what the state did was, we're going to provide guidance to the individual communities. And we're going to do that through the individual state guide plans, which are the documents that are used for the cities and towns to then amend their comprehensive plans accordingly. And once that's established, and then they adopt the necessary regulations through their zoning ordinance. So the town of Coventry, like many other communities, has taken this guidance. And what you did was you adopted a regulatory ordinance that determines where they should be situated, how they should be situated, and providing the requisite performance standards. Our objective, and every solar project that I've ever worked in, we try not to depart from those performance standards. We try to ask for no relief. We want full compliance. But the special use permit is the standard by which is established to allow solar facilities in this district, in the town of Coventry. And what that means from a regulatory perspective is that the community has already determined that this is a conditionally permissible land use. And in fact, because of procedural process, and when you adopt these ordinances, you've already determined that it's consistent with the comp plan. Whenever you author an ordinance, it's got to be vetted through the Planning Commission process, and through the council process. And there's a public input process. And the only way you can adopt that ordinance is if ultimately you conclude that it's consistent with your comprehensive plan. In regards to the town of Coventry, you're pretty distinctive. Will you want to protect the western portion of town, keep that rural character? You lack the infrastructure. Then you've got the central, that's kind of a hybrid of the eastern and the western, and really more the more dense development to the eastern Coventry with the infrastructure in place, and where there's a mixture of land uses. The beauty of solar facility, that's a passive land use anyway, it doesn't really require much infrastructure, like Mr. Russo testified to. When you bring in a true land use, whether it be a residential or commercial industrial, then you bring in the necessary infrastructure. You have to develop roadways. You need the utilities. Solar is nothing like this. Post-construction, you'll never know it's there. It's such a passive quiet land use. So I believe it's the, why the town of Coventry adopted the ordinance that they did in the manner they did, was because they realized that the acreage in question, or the zoning in question we're talking about, really represents more so the area of eastern Coventry. That's where I believe solar can be more acclimated to, and yet protect the rural character of western Coventry, and more so that hybrid in central Coventry. And I believe that's why the ordinance was authored in the manner it was. Once again, for the record, we're going to meet all the performance standards. And I believe, given the moderate size of this, I believe we can, to the greatest extent possible, protect the character of the residential neighborhood and the resulting view corridors.
Thank you, Ed. That, Mr. Chairman, you know, his report speaks for itself. And I know the board has looked at it. And, you know, he'll stand ready to answer any questions. But I just wanted to allow him to inject his personal expertise on this issue for us. And I thank you for your time to allow me to go back over that territory traveled at the July meeting. Our last person to talk this evening, Mr. Chairman, is Lindsey McGovern. I think she's now...
I'm here, Bob.
Available. Thank you, Lindsey.
Sorry about that.
Okay, that's fine. Lindsey, just by way of introduction, Revody Energy, is that correct?
That's correct.
Can you hear me, Lindsey?
You're going in and out, Bob. Can you repeat?
Anybody hear me? Okay. You're the Vice President of Revody Energy, correct?
That's correct.
And how long have you been with the company?
I've been with the company for five years.
And just for the board, just describe your educational, professional background
Sure.
for the board.
Sure. I have my master's in business administration from Providence College, my undergraduate and bachelor of science in accountancy, and I'm a certified public accountant.
And your life work right now is... Fair.
Can you please repeat yourself? Bob, you're on mute.
Can you? All right. Let me, let's try this. As part of the submission for the board for this evening, there were two documents that we submitted. One is what's entitled "A Benefit and Burden Assessment." Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the other one, and we'll talk about the benefits first, is an operation and maintenance plan that your firm developed. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Just of the board and the public, the document entitled... The analysis that you've concluded to share with the board this evening.
Sure. Bob, I lost you there, but I will go through this analysis. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before you, you'll see the Coventry Benefit and Burden Assessment we put together. Essentially, it's a comparison of whether we would develop a commercial solar development on this particular property, or a residential development, both of which are allowed on this property that's zoned. If you look at the commercial solar development analysis, there's three forms of revenue streams. The first revenue stream is annual real property and tangible property tax. And that yields just about $890,000 over the life of the asset, which is a 30-year life. The second revenue stream is $60,000 annually, which is tangible property tax for the off-site utility on upgrades that will be needed to be done. And that will yield $1.8 million over the 30 years. And lastly, you'll see the town permit fees, which we estimate for about $50,000. So the total economic value over the course of 30 years would be estimated to be just over $2.7 million. And then when we look on the flip side at a residential development, we used 14 houses, which was from Dave Russo at Dupree Engineering, his conceptual residential plan. And we looked at the annual real property and tangible property that that would yield. And it was estimated to yield around $98,000, 14 houses. And we also looked at the school services for the houses, assuming two school-aged children at a cost of approximately $13,500 per student. And that burden would be approximately $378,000. So the total economic value on an annual basis would be $280,000 burden, which over the course of 30 years would be $8.4 million burden. So in short, to us, looking at it from a financial perspective, it would make more sense to develop a commercial development as opposed to a residential development. And that was really just the goal here.
Okay. I think that speaks for itself. Could you then go to, just give a general overview of the operation maintenance plan? We don't need to go through it. But generally, what purpose is, and is this standard for your company?
Sure. Yeah, this is a standard operations and maintenance plan that we have for all of our solar assets across the state on a very high level, because there's a lot of detail here. But on a quarterly basis, we do a visual inspection of the systems, general site conditions, the PVRA, the electrical equipment, soil erosion. And we also look at the site vegetation and the landscaping. And typically, we cut the grass two or three times a year, depending upon the growth. But we do use a slow-grow grass seed. And as it grows slow, but once it reaches to approximately 10 inches, it lays over. So the maintenance is pretty minimal when it comes to going on site. And on an annual basis, we'll test all the equipment, including combiner boxers, inverters, and other electrical equipment. We have in, it's called also energy. It's a monitoring system that's linked the entire solar site, including the electrical equipment. So we're on alert 24/7 if there's any outage or any emergency. And we have an electrician that's on staff full-time, and he's there within minutes if anything were to occur. And that, in short, is the O and M plan. Are you there?
Yeah, I'm good. Yeah, I apologize. I'm having trouble hearing you this time. Yeah, I heard your some...
Okay.
Anything further on that, Lindsey, unless you want to say something?
No.
To report that plan speaks for itself.
Yeah, I try to be as brief as possible. That's it.
That concludes all the people that we wanted to share the testimony with you tonight. Their reports were all submitted. I don't want to belabor the evening. With your permission, we'll stop now and allow the board to proceed with questioning, or however you want to handle the public participation.
Mr. Murray, I just have one quick comment while she's still there. I noticed you, the lease agreement is 25 years, correct?
Mr. Chairman, can you please repeat your question?
Yes, the lease agreement is 25 years, correct? With the other parcel of land?
It's 25 years, a two, five-year extension.
To two, all right. So that's where you got the 30 years. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, is that concluding your presentation, Mr. Murray?
It does, Mr. Chairman. I think we've taken enough of your time. And you're generous in allowing us to share that information. So at this point, we have nothing further. We'll stand available for questions.
Okay. I think we're going to go into, back to the public hearing. Is the staff available to do that?
Staff is available.
Okay, should we, maybe we'll go right into public hearing?
Mr. Reyes looks like he'd like to take a break. Do you want to take a five-minute break? Or what do you want to do?
We can certainly take a five-minute break.
Looks like Mr. Kenny is shaking his head.
Okay.
Okay. We'll take a quick five-minute break. We'll be back at 9:05.
All right. Thank you.
... their jobs. President Trump fights for the American people because he cares about stories like these.
I'm assuming that was, I don't know who it was, but I muted somebody. It was, sir.
Yes, I am.
I'm ready.
Let's rock and roll.
Okay.
Okay, so would you...
I believe we're going to go right into the, with the public.
Okay, I, I have, Mr. Oribona would like to speak, he's the only one raising his hand right now, I'm going to allow him to speak. John, are you there, sir? You have to unmute yourself.
Here you go.
There you go, thank you.
Hi, Mr. Oribona.
Mr. Oribona, state your name, address, and spell your, your name for the record, please.
John Oribona, O-R-A, B as in boy, O-N-A, 104 Coventown Road, Coventry.
Hey, Mr. Oribona.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flynn and members of the board. I had this opportunity this evening to share with you some of the information I've gathered, and I like to break it down into two, two pieces. Number one, specific comments made at the last meeting and today's meeting, and then go into some other material. Number one, I have some significant questions about the lease entered into by the energy company along with the... Some questions about the terms and whether or not it's, it's valid in terms of utilizing the leased land for this particular project. More importantly, the site itself, it's my opinion, and this may have to be adjudicated legally, it's my opinion that if, in fact, they're going to use the leased land, then it should conform to the requirements of an agro site, which means that the boundaries that would exist would have to be long and long compared to the boundary set up by the solar power company. That's the first thing. Second thing, no matter which way you look at it, it's a power plant. It's in a residential zone, it's manufacturing. There's been a number of court cases presently in the Rhode Island Supreme Court that indicate that, in fact, this is the case. Number three, Mr. Sweeney's study of comparability at the last meeting is hogwash. First of all, the study in North Carolina was converted into solar farms. The Indiana study does not even apply comparability to the site in Rhode Island with residential. Now, as far as today is concerned, Mr. Dufour of Maine Drilling, is he under oath? It's a question I have.
Okay, continue all your questions, Mr. Oribona, and then the...
Yeah, I will, I will.
Murray will answer them.
Dufour of Maine Drilling never indicated the following. They have OSHA violations, they had a Supreme Court case in the state of Maine presently, they have problems in Merrimack, New Hampshire, they have problems in Hollysville Quarry also. I can go on and on. Number two, Sage Environmental, which studies did she use to come up with those conclusions? She never cited any studies. I'd like to know which studies were cited. Now we get to the issue about what's good for the town. First of all, the indication is that, and Mr. Pimentel indicated that, the comprehensive plan is good for the town with the new proposal. Let me say this to you, you're destroying potential farmland, woodland, the CO2 that the trees give off, the second will never be available again, you're destroying top soil, you're destroying the total rural character of the Coventown area. And then, Mr. Murray indicates that you've got your choice. You can have a residential development, or you can have a solar farm. Well, you should have neither there. First of all, to develop that site for homes would take an astronomical amount of money, time, and effort, which they're not prepared to do, they're prepared to take the easy way out. And removal of the trees, by the way, once, once their contract with National Grid is expired, is, is a diamond for real estate development, because all the trees are cut down, never to be replaced again. They say it's good for the environment. It's simply a masquerading, it's not good for the environment, there's no studies that show that it's good for the environment. The loss of trees and what the character of the neighborhood should be overriding as a factor. It's good for the tax base. First of all, $13,000 change for a student makes Coventry one of the highest per capita costs for education in the state of Rhode Island. I would think that number, you exceed Esquenage. So I question her numbers. They say it's good for jobs, it's good for jobs. What jobs? You got a few temporary permanent, a few temporary permanent jobs, with a handful of permanent jobs. I don't consider that economic development. And then you get to the more, more important question, is it legal? There are test cases, of which one Judge Van Cugan issued a decision in Portsmouth saying that it's manufacturing. You can't put manufacturing next to a residential area. In the comprehensive plan that the town of Coventry has, it's indicated that it's a long-range plan. People make commitments. When they purchased their land, their, their land and their homes there, they made a commitment, and the town supported that commitment. To change a midstream and put a farm next door to them is inconsequential. I'll end my comments further, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Oribona. Mr. Murray? Would you like to answer those, please? You're muted, I think, Mr. Murray.
Can you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I apologize. Mr. Chairman, I apologize to you, Mr. Oribona, I, I didn't realize we're back in session, so I didn't catch all of his comments, but I believe Scott Rabidu could respond to the, the question about the CO2 offset.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ralph Palumbo.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bob's having technical difficulty, I just wanted to jump in.
Okay, Ralph.
Yeah, thank you. I, I want to say, everyone we hired to help assist us to bring professional expert technical knowledge is just that, they're professional experts. These are people with great experience and great understudy in their particular science. So Mr. Oribona's comments, although I appreciate them, challenges makes us better and better, but we have the highest-grade experts with the highest integrity, and they've given you straight answers to the impacts of, of this project.
Mr. Murray?
As far as the lease, the lease is a legally binding lease. I know, you know, it's a private transaction between two, two, two people, and it's just that, it's private, but it's legally binding. And as far as the CO2 equation, solar, the elimination of the fossil fuel footprint versus the trees' consumption of CO2s is a 10-to-1 factor. And there are many studies out there that show that, you know, the solar, solar reducing fossil fuel has a significant benefit to the environment even when offsetting the cutting of trees. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, this is Bob, Robert Murray again, can you hear me now?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, I, I just, as a follow-up, and I'll defer to your solicitor, Mr. Oribona did bring up that Portsmouth decision. I believe Mr. D'Agostino has provided you a memorandum or a discussion of that case and how it is really not applicable to this. I also submitted to Mr. Crossman my analysis of that following our last meeting, but I'll defer to Mr. D'Agostino at the appropriate time on that case. Thank you.
Do you want to answer that, Dave? You're on mute.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I did circulate a confidential memo, an analysis of the Fontaine v. Edwards case that Mr. Oribona referred to earlier this evening, and also that was referenced at the last public hearing. And I, I think the simplest way to distinguish the Portsmouth situation to what, what is presently being proposed in the town of Coventry is that Coventry has undertaken a significant set of work to establish a, a, an ordinance that controls and directs the siting of various solar applications. And the Coventry ordinance is, is rather comprehensive. As I reported to you in my memorandum, there are major, minor roof-mounted solar installations, small solar installations, and all of these have significant components of siting criteria. The, I'm getting, I'm getting an echo on, on my audio, I don't know if you folks can, can hear that, but I, I apologize for that, I don't know what the, what the reason is, but basically, the, the fundamental difference between the Fontaine case, that was the Portsmouth case, and what's presently before the town of Coventry is that Portsmouth, at that time, did not have any siting criteria. So in the absence of a solar ordinance, the, the zoning board in the town of Portsmouth had to rely on the, they, they ended up relying on manufacturing and the utility aspect of a solar, you know, a solar farm as a power generating station, if you will. Because Coventry has undertaken to establish a set, set of comprehensive siting criteria, that challenge does not exist here. You have a set of criteria that this proposal can be measured against, and as, if the project moves forward, there are various standards that must be met according to Coventry's ordinance. So there's a, there's a significant amount of control, a significant amount of siting criteria, and a significant amount of what I would call guideposts that exist in the town of Coventry that did not exist in Portsmouth. So that case is really inapplicable to the present matter before the town of, of Coventry, because we do have a lot of, we do have a rather fully developed set of siting criteria.
And Dave, if I could, what's your opinion on the lease agreement? Basically, the land they're leasing to get the 15%. I know there's a lot of people that I've talked to on several site walks that would like to know if, if that is something that's applicable, or should that land be combined into one?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that's, I, I think that question really is a dual question, only partially does it, does it, does it impact on legality, per se. So I, I think at the last hearing, I may have mentioned, I know that in the, in the director's reports, he had, I believe, recommended that this, the leased property be included as a, as one contiguous parcel. Obviously, you know, they're right at the, at the 15% that's, that's set forth in the, in the ordinance, I believe they're at 14.9%, and they've achieved that by leasing the parcel that they have leased. From a legal standpoint, the documentation, the lease, and the, the manner by which the applicant has use and control of that of that portion of the Vinagro property is certainly proper. And I don't see anything legally wrong or improper with regards to holding that additional property as a leasehold interest to make this application cogent. So I don't think there's a legal issue. You know, I certainly would be happy to take a look at something if Mr. Arabona or someone would like to point out a specific provision. But in general, I don't see a legal issue with regards to a lease. That aside, and again, I don't want to step on the commission's toes, but I would point out that, you know, depending on what transpires during the public hearing and the commission's deliberations, you know, the applicant is right at the threshold of the 15%. They're compliant with the ordinance, but they're right at that threshold. And I know that, I think, I don't want to speak for the director, but I think the director had recommended perhaps acquiring the necessary land in fee as opposed to a leasehold interest.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Murray. You there, Mr. Murray? I think you're on mute. Mr. Murray? I think he might be in Maine, too.
Are you hearing me? Okay.
You're on mute, Mr. Murray, too.
Mr. Crossman, could you unmute Ed Pimentel?
Where is, I don't see Ed Pimentel. He's sitting with you. There is no separate square for him. Mr. Chair, am I missing anything? Is there a square somewhere for a Mr. Pimentel?
No, I don't see one and I do think Mr. Murray is having a lot of difficulty because he keeps going in and out and it's very hard to understand.
A string and two tin cans.
Yeah, that's Cranston for you.
Got to love these zone meetings.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ralph Palumbo. Is there something that I can answer?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure if Mr. Murray, what he was gonna answer.
Yeah.
Ralph, I think Bob wanted to comment or opine on Mr. Attorney D'Agostino's synopsis of those two cases.
Yeah, I'm not a lawyer. Thank you, Mr. Crossman. I'm not a lawyer, so I obviously can't do that. And I don't have another lawyer on the line tonight, so. Thank you, Mr. D'Agostino, and we can move on to another subject and once Mr. Murray comes back in, maybe you can.
Am I okay now?
I hear you, Mr. Murray. No, I don't.
Okay, I apologize. I just wanted to follow up on Mr. D'Agostino. I just want to note for the record, the Vinagro property is owned by Rockwood Realty and Calhoun Associates owns the other property. They are joint applicants in this matter and I agree us leasing a portion of the property, we clearly have, for a variety of reasons which we don't need to take up tonight, you know, the merging of those two properties, one a lease and one's owned in fee. I'll defer that discussion with Mr. D'Agostino to a later time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Arabona, has all your questions been answered?
No, I have a question of Mr. D'Agostino.
Okay.
Mr. D'Agostino, thank you for your reply, but my question was more in the requirements of the Vinagro land and the setbacks and other requirements that are different than what the solar farm would have. Which would be the conclusion? The Vinagro property and their requirements, side yard requirements, or the other parcel? Can you make that determination now?
Mr. Arabona, I don't think I can make that determination at this point in time. I'm not sure that I have enough information. I also, I'm not exactly sure if I understand your question.
Well, what I'm simply saying is that the side yard requirements for Vinagro's piece of property, I think, is 219 feet from the next property line. The solar farm, it's like 60 feet. So which requirement prevails? Vinagro's 219 feet from the next property line? Or where the solar farm's gonna be utilizing Vinagro's land?
Okay, I think I understand your question. I'd like to just say that I think your question is based on the current use of the Vinagro land, and I know Mr. Murray indicated the name that that is held under, but for our purposes, I think we'll refer to it as the Vinagro land.
Right.
I think what you're suggesting, Mr. Arabona, is because of the current use to which the Vinagro land is placed, that it has different criteria in terms of setbacks, buffer zones, and that sort of thing. And so by the solar applicant utilizing a portion of the Vinagro land under lease, I think your question is which setbacks control? The Vinagro setbacks, which are larger, or the setbacks under the zone where the predominant amount of the solar proposal would be cited?
You're absolutely correct.
Okay, so the fact is that you have to look at the land according to the use to which it is put. And frankly, as I said earlier, you know, utilizing land for a, under a lease is appropriate so long as the underlying use is appropriate. And so the Vinagro setbacks for the use to which they put their land, and to be sure, I think you're referring to the gravel excavation and related activities. Those activities would not be taking place on the portion of the Vinagro land that this applicant would be utilizing for the solar project. So the use is different. That portion of the Vinagro land under lease would, the setbacks and the the conditions would be applicable to the solar development, not the Vinagro use.
Excuse me. What I'm saying is that if they combine the land parcels, if they're combining the land parcels, then the use of Vinagro should prevail, which means that there should not be any solar farm within 219 feet of my property line.
I understand what you're saying. I think that I disagree with it because of the proposal that's in front of us. And, you know, I certainly, you know, this project is gonna continue to evolve. I'm certainly willing to look at the particulars of, I think I understand your question. I'm certainly willing to look at the particulars of this and advise the board accordingly and certainly try to provide an answer to your questions. I just think that right now, I would disagree with your suggestion that the Vinagro land controls what would happen on this solar farm.
Well, then maybe that could be an issue for adjudication.
Thank you, Dave. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your help.
Okay, Mr. Murray. I think, Mr. Crossman, I think Mr. Arabona has answered his questions, asked his questions. Should we move on to the next one?
Yeah, I was just waiting for Mr. Arabona to move out. Did you hang up, John?
I thought I did.
No, you're still inside. I can, Ed, can we move him out? There we go. Okay. Mr. Flynn, I am going to allow Mike Burke to talk now. Mike, you're on mute. Please unmute. Mike, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi, Mr. Burke.
Hi, Chairman Flynn, members of the commission, Director Crossman. Mr. Murray, Mr. Palumbo, thank you for the time tonight.
Mr. Burke, please state your full name, address, and spell your name, please.
I'm sorry. Michael Burke, B U R K E, 2 Watercress Court, Coventry. I actually wasn't even gonna call in tonight. And on a much lighter note, ironically enough, I am in Maine, so hopefully you don't lose me. Some new information was brought up tonight and that's the only reason for my call. I had a couple of questions and then I just wanted to make a statement or two. The first question I had actually was, seeing as how this is a special circumstance and we're doing this all over the computer and by Zoom and whatnot, this meeting would normally be in a public setting in council chambers and I'd be able to see everybody. Could you tell me how many people are in the meeting tonight, public?
Sure. Mike, there are, right now, there are 22 panelists, including yourself, because you're inside the panel right now, and there are 31 attendees, which are people, yeah.
Okay, thank you. One of the first questions I had, and I guess this could be directed to Mr. Russo, the engineer from DePreet. He brought up that blueprint, the plans that included ledge. And one of the ones that stuck out was ledge at zero inches. And I think it was at test hole number 12, maybe. It's in the southeast corner of the lot and that's actually the closest to my property. He had made mention of, you know, if they're not gonna blast because it's too expensive, they might actually backfill in a couple of spots. So if that is a spot that they backfill, I would like to know because when you add fill on top of ledge, you're increasing the elevation and that's just gonna increase the elevation of these panels, which increases the likelihood of seeing them. So that was the first question that I had. And then to go on into some of the stuff that Mr. Arabona had said, to be totally honest with you, I'd rather have houses. You know, they put this, and let's call it what it is, you know, not to sugarcoat it. It's almost a scare tactic, like if this solar farm doesn't go in, we'll put houses in and that's not gonna benefit the town. Well, I don't believe that, you know. 14 houses, if you even could build 14, because it's gonna cost you a boatload of money to blow up all of that rock. But if you do put in 14 houses, you know, that's gonna generate over $100,000 worth of tax revenue for the town. I don't know if this solar farm is gonna generate $100,000 worth of tax revenue. Now you want to go into the two schoolchildren. That's such a hypothetical. Two schoolchildren in 14 houses, that's 28 children. There aren't 28 children in all of the abutting properties. The odds of having 28 children in that neighborhood and putting that strain on the public school system, that's unlikely. You know, what if there are zero children? You know, now that's all tax revenue beneficial to the town. And the strain on services, police, fire, you know, trash, it's 14 houses. That's nothing. That's not gonna stress the fire department or you're not gonna have to hire another police officer. That's gonna have minimal impact to the town in terms of finances. And just one other thing, bear with me, I'm reading off some notes I had written here. A solar farm is gonna bring nothing positive to the neighborhood, nothing to the area financially. If I want to go and sell my house and someone walks into my yard and sees a solar farm behind me, they're gonna turn around and leave. If they walk into my backyard and they see a house, that's natural. We live in a residential area. It's okay to see houses. They're gonna be fine with that, but if you, you know, homes bring value to other homes. A solar farm is not gonna bring value to my home, you know. All of these experts have said it's certainly not gonna detract from the value. I beg, you know, I could disagree on that. It's not gonna add to my value. Other homes may add to my value. It's certainly not gonna turn someone away if I go to sell my house. I think that's all I had for my comments and then just that question on the ledge. If it's gonna be backfilled and you're gonna raise the elevation, you're just making it more obvious for these panelists. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ralph Palumbo. I just want to answer Mr. Burke's question and how we install, if there's ledge there, we will not elevate that corner. We will drill into the ledge or blast the ledge. It would not make sense if we elevate that corner and the rest of the site is lower. It wouldn't be functional for solar. So if it's a small area, we probably just drill right into the ledge and insert the poles and stabilize the poles in the drill hole of the ledge.
Mr. Flynn?
Yes, I think he answered the questions, Mr. Crossman.
No, if I may, Mr. Murray has a, would like Mr. Pimentel to answer some of the questions that were just asked. So I'm gonna, at this time, I'm gonna click on him to answer the questions, if that's okay. Mr. Pimentel, you're muted. Can you unmute, please? I cannot hear you. It's not working, Bob. I've been seeing that finger all night.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Just trying to let you know, Mr. Pimentel called in. We don't care to comment. I'm trying to clear up the audio issue.
All right, Mr. Flynn, do you want me to go to the next one?
Yeah, I just, he broke up on that. He doesn't want to comment on what?
He didn't want to comment on Mr. Burke's questions. I think he just wanted to bring, me to bring Mr. Pimentel in to assist him in trying to answer questions because he's struggling so much to get a good audio connection.
Okay. He gave you a thumbs up.
He gave me a thumbs up, except the only problem now is he's gone back out again, so. I can hear you. Now, see, I can hear him right now. All right, I'm gonna bring in Pat. Okay, Mr. Flynn?
No, go ahead, Mr. Crossman.
Pat, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hi.
Yep, Pat Hickey, 10 Rivers Edge Drive, Coventry, Rhode Island. And I guess my question is to Lindsay McGovern. I'm not sure if she's still on the call or not. But she was asked how long she's worked for Reba Energy. And could she repeat her answer again?
Hi, this is Lindsay McGovern. Five years?
Five years, okay. Well, because I looked up Reba Energy and I see where it was just created in May of 2019. So that's what brought that question to me was, how could she have worked for Reba Energy for five years if they've only been in existence for one year?
Sure, it's an affiliate of a parent company
and that company?
That has existed for five years.
And what's the name of that company?
Southern Sky Renewable Energy, Rhode Island.
Okay, so is it true that Southern Sky is no longer affiliated with, Southern Sky Rhode Island is no longer affiliated with Southern Sky Boston? Is there like a lawsuit or something happening with Mr. Palumbo? I mean, I don't know, can I ask that question?
Mr. Palumbo, there is a lawsuit with my shareholders that I've received. This is Mr. Palumbo. There is a lawsuit with that, with my shareholders that I've resolved. And it's got nothing to do with this. It's a private matter.
Okay, so Southern Sky is what you used to operate under prior to Revity, and Revity's been around for one year. Is, is that true?
Already answered that question.
Oh, okay, I guess I didn't catch it. Um, anyway, I wanted the, to ask the question about the revenue. And that's, again, most figures came from Lindsay McGovern, and it had to do with the $60,000 annually that the town of Coventry would bring in, um, as income revenue that would be coming into the town. Can, how, how do you derive at the 60,000? Because I went on to the state of Rhode Island, and I found out where they have a flat fee that they, um, each solar farm, depending on the number of megawatts produced, there's a flat fee that gets paid to the municipality, and it's like $5,000 per megawatt or something. This particular solar farm is 5.3 megawatts, I think. So I'm having trouble backing into the $60,000 figure. I don't know if I'm not doing my math right.
Sure, the 5,000 per megawatt that you're funding on the state website is for real property tax.
Okay.
And tangible tax, property tax is, sorry, tangible property tax is 5,000 per megawatt, and real property tax is 2,000 per megawatt. So you have 7,000 per megawatt for real and tangible property tax, which is 30, estimated at 30,000 annually. As for the 60,000, the 60,000 is in addition, and that is for, uh, tangible prop ta- tangible property tax revenue attributable to the off-site utility-owned upgrades that will be, uh, installed by National Grid.
So, but, so, but this project, just correct me if I'm wrong, brings in $30,000 a year? Is that what the town of Coventry is going to get?
Approximately, that is correct, Pat.
Okay, that's a, that's a locked-in figure for 25 years or 30 years? Does that ever go up with inflation or tax values, or is that a locked fee?
It's locked, and it's based on the size of the system, so approximately the, the size of the system is around 4.8 megawatts AC right now.
Okay, 4.8. Okay, so that $30,000, then I would multiply that for like 30 years, and that's, that's not even a million dollars that the town would bring in, not even a million dollars. I called the town of Coventry, I talked to the finance director, and our annual revenue on taxes from 2019 was $74 million. So there's, this is a project's gonna bring in $30,000 a year. We're bringing in 74, over 74 million as a town. You're gonna disrupt the, the quality of life for the hundred and some odd residential abutting properties to this solar farm. This, to me, doesn't seem like this is a win-win for the town of Coventry or the residents that live in that area. The only people winning in this particular project, in my opinion, are Revity and Rockwood. Not the people that have lived in the town, that have, that have made a commitment to the town. We pay our taxes, okay, we send our children to the schools there, we're part of the community. According to the, to the comprehensive plan, we're supposed to keep the integrity of our town. Residents should be living in residential areas. Nobody bought their property up there thinking that they were gonna have a solar farm in their backyard, that they were gonna have, you know, a commercial or industrial or whatever you wanna call that solar farm. Nobody in that area purchased their house thinking that that was going to be what was gonna happen to their property after they bought it. I think that this is a, this is such a bad idea. It is, it's, it's just not. So 74 million, you're gonna bring in $30,000 a year. You're gonna drop the property values of the abutting properties, which is probably gonna lose that $30,000 a year. You're gonna have a bunch of very upset residents. You're gonna ruin the, the visual, uh, appearance of Calventown Road, Watercrest Court, the Oaks. You're gonna open Pandora's box here, because we've got a lot of undeveloped land in the town of Coventry. Okay, they talked about the property that sits to the west of this property, and how mu- how did, I think one of the guys here has mentioned there were like 11,000 acres of land over there. You're opening Pandora's box with this, because Rockwood Realty or anybody else will go in and they'll start buying up other property, start taking trees down, start giving you guys more applications for special use permits in residential areas. It's going to ruin the integrity of our town. All you have to do is talk to the people that live in Hockington, in Boroughville, in Gloucester. This is happening all over our state. There is a need for solar energy. There's no doubt about it. But it doesn't belong in a residential area. Okay, I guess I've had my say for the night.
Thank you, Pat. Yeah, I think, uh, Mr. Crossman, I think that was a comment more than a question. Um, could we move to the next? Unless somebody would like to address that.
Sure, not a problem. I'm gonna, um, I have Kelly's next.
Okay.
Kelly, are you with us?
I am unmuted. Hi, everyone, thank you.
Hello, Kelly.
Kelly Powers, 8 Watercrest Court, Powers, P O W E R S. Hi, I just wanna say thank you to the Planning Commission Board for coming out to my property and taking a look, and, um, I appreciate that very much for doing your due diligence. Um, I'd like to know what the plan is for an environmental team to come out and do testing, um, from the town, not from Revity. Um, I feel like, you know, I appreciate Mr. Murray having, and Revity having, you know, they're all, Mr. Rabado and Mr. Pimental and the lady from Sage and everywhere else. But I feel like as a town, the town needs to find someone, different people to find different, um, opinions. I feel like a third party would be definitely more unbiased, I guess would be the word. Um, so I'd like to know what the plan for that is.
We can certainly ask as a board for an ERT.
Yes, I'm formally asking for an ERT from a third party, not someone that Revity's gonna bring in and give their opinion about. Thank you.
All right, thank you for your question.
No, okay, I have multiple questions.
Okay, go ahead. I don't wanna, I'm not mean to cut you short.
Thank you. Um, so I'd like to know what the plan for that is, like, when is that going to take place? Who are you guys getting? Um, is that too far in advance?
We haven't discussed that yet. We have not asked any of the, of our questions from the board yet.
Okay, okay, so I guess my next question is going to be, um, you know, because, you know, with the environmental testing, you know, we've already gone over that there has been terrible smells coming from the property, um, prior to. So I, I really am curious to see what the divi-, you know, the devi-, um, Department of Environmental Management would have to say about that. I'd like to also formally ask that the Planning and Zoning Board forbid any blasting at all. Um, if it's not necessary and you don't wanna do it, and it's in a cost, then there's no reason to. Um, and I'm actually formally asking that there's no blasting at all. There's no one here that can guarantee that there's no damage unless Mr., um, I'm sorry, what is his name, Mr.?
Mr. DeFoe, I believe.
Mr. DeFoe, yes, is he here? Can he guarantee that, you know, in his experience, has he ever had any problems with blasting, um, of any foundations or cracks or property damage, septic, pools, et cetera? Um, in his experience? I mean, I just heard that there's, you know, numerous complaints, so, you know, if he can't guarantee that, and that's who, you know, Mr. Murray is bringing in to say, you know, with his experience, then, you know, I, I'm formally asking that there's no blasting at all. Hello?
Yeah, I'm here. Do you have any more questions?
Oh, yes, I do, um.
Each of, uh, well, ask all your questions, and then Mr. Murray will answer them.
Okay, well, I don't need Mr. Murray to answer them. I need my planning and, and my planning board to give some insight on this, because I feel like anything Mr. Murray is going to say is going to be, you know, biased to Revity Energy with no disrespect. Um, you know, I feel like it shouldn't be blasting in a rural residential area. There's absolutely no guarantee. There's no reason for it, and, um, you know, with that being said, I hope that the planning, the board, you know, takes the properties of our neighborhoods and our family's safety first. Um.
We absolutely do, but I have to say that a lot of the development on Calventown Road has been blasted to put houses in. That I do know. I live on Calventown Road.
I know, you live at the other end, though. Like, that's not near where.
We blasted.
We are bolder.
The, the Development Glacier Way right behind my house had to blast to put houses in.
Okay, well, I just feel like, I feel like the, the project should be scaled back. I feel like the panel should be less, and it should be further from houses if they're doing it at all. And to be honest with you, after listening to the presentation, I wouldn't mind houses. I think houses bring value to other houses. I don't think that solar panels do. I think that, um, the blasting would be, need to be done with, I just feel like it's taking trees down. It's, it's just actually too close to our properties. And after listening to Mr. DeFoe, when he said 250 feet, that's just about right where I am. My, I'm at the 40-foot mark where they're going to clear land. So I have huge boulders that are not going to be moved by backhoes. They're going to have to be blasted. I think that if Revity can make this concession in the smaller panels abutting, you know, the neighborhoods, it would go a long way with, you know, with not being as close to, I'm sorry, um, without being as close to, you know, impacting neighborhoods. I feel like it's way too close. I feel like you can see it, and I don't, I don't understand how, I don't know, I just, I, I don't feel like I, I can understand enough about the blasting. So maybe if Mr. DeFoe can tell me that, you know, with all of his experience, that there's been no problems, because I, I just, it's close, and you guys have seen how close it is. I mean, it's 40 feet. It's not far from my backyard. I worry about my foundations. I worry about my walls, my septic, my pool I just put in last month. I mean, it. My other question, I guess I would ask, would be for Mr. Pimental with the respect of leaving three trees after my 40-foot buffer. I have three trees. My other question, I mean, so I don't understand, like, where is the buffer coming in? Is he the one that I even speak to? I don't know. Um, but Mr. Mr. Pimental is the one that I, I think that I wrote down. That it's 40 feet, you guys saw, it's three trees, is leaving a buffer for my property from these 12-foot solar panels or nine to 12-feet solar panels, and, um, so I guess my question is, how would they, how far would they make the buffer back? And can we push it back? Can I ask the board to have them push it back? I mean, push it back far enough where it still remains a rural residential area, where people wanna come. They don't wanna see an industrial park. They wanna see a nice rural residential family neighborhood where they go to Washington Oak, and everyone's a community. That's what I've been doing for the last 12 years. I just feel like it's unfair, I guess is the word, to make it so that it looks like an industrial park in our neighborhood when people from Sweetwater, from Teakwood, from Watercrest to the Oaks, all buy this neighborhood for what it's worth. And it's not gonna be worth that. And I don't care who Mr. Murray brings in to say that it doesn't cause any problems with price value in homes. It does. And he didn't even do it in-state. He did it from different states, which still, there was definitely a price value difference. My other question is for Mr. Rabado with the natural resource, is I respectfully disagree with the 2% um, with the animal and wildlife habitat. That is not fair to say. I've lived here 12 years, and Mr. Flynn, you've been in these backwoods. You know how many coyotes and deer and rabbits and raccoons? The wildlife is back here. The dens are back here. You can't stay in 40-something acres that 2% is gonna be affected. That's not a fair assessment. So I guess my question for the planning board is going to be, can you please get your own evaluations of all of these things that they keep, you know, Mr. Murray has brought in his team to say? They're obviously gonna be biased because they're from him. They're paid by Revity. They're paid by their company. So it, I don't feel like it's a very fair analysis, I guess would be the word. And my other, my last point is, you know what, I'd rather have houses. I'd rather have houses, 'cause you know what? That's community. That's neighborhoods, that's kids, that's people. You can't say that it's a burden to the town these people give to the community. We see that in every single neighborhood that you've put in. The Oaks, the Oaks, too, we're community. We're all community, and I'd rather have that than I'd rather, than the 13,000 solar panels that you're gonna put in. I don't think that's very fair. So I guess that's my closing statement, that, um, you know, I guess, I guess my question would be for Mr. DeFoe. If, if he's around to answer any questions, if he's had any experiences with blasting, with any problems with people's foundations or with their properties or with their septic or with their pools.
Hey, Kelly, I think, I think, uh, Mr. Murray is writing down all your questions, and
Oh, good.
He will, uh, ask the specific person to answer the question, all the questions that you have answered. Mr. Murray?
He's on mute.
Can't hear you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Crossman, I think he looked like he's on mute.
The, um, I did just get that phone. Hi, Mr. Chairman, I apologize, we're, uh,
No, no problem.
Trying to use Mr. Pimental's phone, um, but I'm using my computer right now. With respect to Ms. Powers' comments, uh, in no particular order, uh, you know, we, we come forward, both on this application and many other applications, presenting recognized experts or qualified professionals to testify. You know, the board can weigh the, um, the veracity of what's said, take in their background. And I respect Ms. Powers' right to question, uh, but it's not fair to a professional, whether it's Mr. Rabado or Mr. Russo or anybody else. You know, the mere fact that they're being employed by my client does not diminish the, their reputation or responsibility to provide accurate and truthful information to this board or any other board. That being said, with respect to the ERT, that, that's a decision the board can make at the appropriate time. And, uh, you know, we've provided a lot of documentation to you, and you can, you can, you can consider that at the appropriate time. With respect to her request that you forbid blasting, um, under the circumstances, I, I would respectfully suggest that that is, uh, that would be a condition that would be, um, I don't wanna say beyond your authority. to say beyond your authority, but beyond the, the testimony that you've heard has suggested that we are looking to minimize blasting if, if it's done at all. We have licensed professionals that can do it. And, you know, if the board sees fit to put some type of condition on that, then we'll, we'll review it at the time. But Mr. Russo testified that if, if there were 14 residential houses put into this area behind Ms. Powers' house, there is a likelihood that there could be more blasting than on this solar array. I think Mr. DeFer is, is still available. I would just say this. We, we can't speak in 100% certainties in these things. We can talk about the process. We can talk about the steps that are taken to protect the surrounding property and property owners. But I, I know that he's not going to say that there is, in the 60-year history of his company, that there has never been an issue with blasting. I mean, that would be, I, that would be insulting to the board if we ever suggested that. So, but if Mr. DeFer wants to add anything to that, if you unmute him, I'm sure he'll, he can enlighten the board further on that.
I'm not sure if you can hear me, but I am unmuted. But no, I agree with you. I think for me to say that it's 100% guaranteed there won't be any issues would extremely erode my credibility and I'd lose all face with the board. So there's obviously issues, but the point is if you plan properly and you execute that planning, there won't be issues through the, the pre-blast analysis to, that would eliminate any of the vibration, any cracking from vibration. And then the blasting mats would, that would cover any blast material leaving the blast zone. You know, one other thing I would caution, and I've heard the term scare tactic tonight, and I don't want to use a scare tactic, but I've seen in other towns where blasting has been prohibited. And usually the alternative to blasting is, is you still bring in a drill and you drill a bunch of holes. And then following that would be a big pneumatic, what we call hole ram in the industry. And it's just a constant, constant from, you know, whatever the work hours are of just, just noise and aggravation. The blasting event, I'll tell you, is done in under a second and it's pretty non-intrusive. But if you bring mechanical methods versus blasting, it's really going to be a nuisance. And that's just from my personal experience.
Thank you, Mr. DeFer. So Kelly, he did not say he could guarantee there would be any issues. And I knew he wouldn't say he could guarantee there would be any...
I didn't think he would. And...
I know that.
You know, I just want to know how far away does it take to crack a foundation or crack a septic or crack, you know, I know he's saying 200 feet, 250 feet, I believe he said is, how far? I, I'm not sure where the 250 feet came from. I'm just about at that point. I'm not small amount and that's my backyard and that's my family. You know, so this does affect my property. You know, I have two huge boulders, not to mention many more, but two immediately behind my property that are not getting taken out by backhoe. They're going to have to be blasted. So I want to know, I guess, how far are they going if they need to? Because they keep saying, you know, if necessary, if necessary. And I feel like there's no other way. I mean, we live behind a rock quarry. Let's be real. So I want to know how far they are going to blast.
Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to belame the point, but I just wanted to draw to the board's attention that there is a buffer behind Ms. Powers' house. I believe it's 40 feet. And then there's an additional 20-feet landscape buffer. And the closest panel would be about 282 feet from her house. And she, she, she forgot Mr. Carter's name. He didn't testify this evening. You recall at the July meeting, we talked about doing very site-specific landscape buffering. And we reiterate that commitment tonight. And this is not a question being 20 feet off her property line.
Mr. Chairman, this is Ralph Palumbo. Just to emphasize Bob's point, there would be no need for Revity to blast in those setback zones that Bob just identified. There, the only reason there would be a reason to blast is where we're driving post and there's resistance points like ledge. But obviously, as Bob says, the post are 280 feet from Ms. Powers' property. And just, just one other thing with Mr. DeFer, you can't guarantee, but I, I've done blasting on many other sites and we haven't had problems. But if there are problems, as a, you know, a cracked septic or a cracked foundation, both companies are heavily, main drilling and blasting is heavily insured. And so is, so is my company and the project company that operates it. So it, it's not, it's not an instance where if we do a pre-blast survey and a foundation is uncracked and we come back after the blast and it is cracked, there's insurance for that. It has not happened. I want to emphasize that in other, in other projects that I've used blasting with. But there is clear compensatory measures that correct the problem. It's not that we just walk away from it saying, "Too bad." I feel compelled to say that because that's, that's part of the overall process that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palumbo.
So is that under Revity or is that under Southern Sky that...
Revity is the project owner, so it'll be under Revity.
Okay. I guess my next question would be to the board is who, or I guess maybe, Mr. Flynn, you answered that. Maybe you don't have anyone yet that you are going to have as environmental team. But I would think that would be a third party. That wouldn't be somebody that Revity brings in, correct?
I believe, what, if the board requests an ERT or a Class II, yes, the town would be involved in that. Is that right, Mr. Crossman?
Yeah, what, we have a, an approved list of consultants for certain tasks. And what I would do is I would go to that list to see who is on that list. And we would pull from that list and use those consultants. And if we were asking them to do something that we did not have a, an expertise in, I, I would then at that time go out for an RFP. But I think we should be able to find what we're looking for on an approved list that we already have.
Yeah, I agree. We've done these in the past.
It's been many years, Mr. Flynn. I don't recall the last time we did one.
No, it's been, it's been a while, but some have been done. And the town is certainly involved, Kelly, on, on all those.
Okay. Is that something that's listed on the town website, like that I could see? Or...
No, that, that's a, that's a list that we have in a file somewhere. I don't even know who's on that list. But no, that list is not, certainly not on the town website.
Okay. Okay. Um, I mean, I guess that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn.
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Crossman, you're up.
Okay, Mr. Flynn, at this time I have four people. I was just curious, do you have any idea how long you're going to keep going at this or...
How many do we have left?
Well, now I've got five people with hands raised. And I'll be honest, it looks like we're losing members fast. But it's your call, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Ms. Lukowicz fell asleep.
We, oh, we, I could certainly ask the boards their opinion if they want to extend this to next month. Or do they want to hear some more questions from, I would keep, obviously, I would keep public hearing open.
And before you discuss that with the board, I would just like to say one thing. State law says that we have 90 days to certify this application complete. That's from the day that it was certificate of completeness was executed. They received a certificate of completeness on July 8th. Today is the 49th day. So that if we were to continue this meeting until the 23rd, you would still be only at the 77th day. I'm just letting the board know that.
How many days do we have total, Mr. Crossman?
I believe I have a copy. The state law says time to issue a planning commission decision was reduced from 120 to 90 days after the issuance of a certificate of completeness. Now, that certificate of completeness was issued on July 8th. So they got 90 days, three months.
Okay, so if I may, if I may, Mr. Chairman, the, the 90 days, we, we, if we needed more time, we could ask the applicant to assent to that. But, you know, I don't, I don't want to put the applicant in that position now. It's unnecessary. But I just wanted it for the board's edification, the statute does allow for us to request assent by the applicant to increase that beyond the 90 days. But we're certainly within the 90 days and would be within the 90 days even at the next meeting with, with still some time.
Yeah, unfortunately, we, you know, we did start late tonight at 7:30. I know people do have to get up and go to work tomorrow. I mean, I want to hear from the board that they want to push it to next month. Do they want to hear some more public comment?
I say push it to next month.
With all due respect, Mr. Flynn, you could always have a special meeting.
I, I thought of that also.
Yes, add another meeting.
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's what I was going to suggest. Go for another, a special meeting in two weeks if we have to.
Mr. Chairman...
Go ahead, Mr. Coloney.
If you're going to have a special meeting, then we have to give them the date now, I believe. That's, that's point one. My concern with continuing the hearing tonight as opposed to another date is, I mean, I, I think we heard some of the same comments at the last meeting. The, I brought in some experts and we're still hearing the same comments again. So it's, it is, it is starting to get a little redundant. But beyond that, I, I just wanted to make a statement and maybe it's appropriate to make it this time and maybe it's not. And this is for, for everyone that's in attendance tonight, the participants, the attendees. I heard a lot about why this doesn't belong in a residential zone. I also heard some questions on the, on the revenue stream. The, the planning board did get a packet that includes the $30,000 a year in taxes. And the board also included in that, there is still $60,000 in taxes coming in from the off-site utility improvement. So it's $90,000 a year versus the 14 houses, which was $98,000 a year. So whether you have two kids in the school or one kid in the school every year, this does create positive cash flow for the town. So I just wanted to kind of clarify that because I all know what happens when the town financial budget is ready to be voted on and people are complaining that the taxes are going up and it's all going to the schools. So I just felt that was something that does, does need to offset. And I realized, and I'm in no way, I'm just trying to keep objective here, stating that this is a, an activity that is, how would I put it, harmonious with the, with the neighborhood. Unfortunately, this planning board now has sat through multiple meetings on solar farms. And it is the result of the town council that passed an ordinance that allowed these to be taken up as a special use permit. And they were not outlawed in either the rural residential zone 2, 5, 20, or anywhere else in town. They're basically a right for an applicant to put in an application and put these, put these applications forward. So it's a grueling process for the residents in the area as well as the board. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. This is not like they, the town council basically made solar farms legal in residential zones in town. And we don't have a choice except to take up the, the applications.
Right. Well said, Mr. Coloney. And the, the thing is, it is so important for the neighborhoods. That's why I don't want to rush through this. I would certainly entertain having a meeting in two weeks if we could set a date. Because I think we, we possibly might not finish next meeting because I know the board has, I have many, many questions yet to ask. So I'm kind of thinking that we might want to do just a, just a meeting for this project so we can concentrate on this project.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say something. And I'm along the lines with Mr. Coloney. I've sat through the meeting last time, which lasted till almost 11:00 PM, and sitting through this meeting, and the questions that we just heard were almost the exact same as the ones in the last meeting. And I fear that if we do do another meeting, it's just going to be the same thing over again. From, and granted, everybody's opinions and their concerns are valid, and I'm not dismaying them in any way. But we're hearing from the same individuals asking the same questions and making the same statements. And I don't know what benefit it is to keep prolonging this. As you said, the board itself has questions that we want to, to get answered. But we just keep prolonging this on and on. And I just, that's just my opinion.
Well, I can ask the public to limit the redundancy of the questions, but we certainly have to hear, especially with this format, if people want to talk, we have to listen to what they have to say. I can't, can't we say we've heard that before. I've heard a lot of redundancy tonight, but I did hear a lot of new questions. And Mr. Murray did, I believe, did a fabulous job on answering them. But yes, I don't think that's something that we want to rush through and not that we, not that we, anybody's saying to rush through. But if we have people, participants that want to ask questions, we really have to allow them to ask the questions.
I got a question. Can we, the participants, they came in one time on it? Like, they keep coming on the same ones. Give other people opportunity to speak, speak that hasn't spoken yet.
All right. I, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not in charge of asking...
I know, I know.
Um, you know, there's been a lot, we kept public hearing open only so people, if they had more information. We did do a couple of sit walks that we didn't talk about yet at the board. But, you know, if we, they had some new questions, that's why we kept the, the public hearing open so we could address those questions. So yes, I agree, we need to limit the redundancy of the questions. But, you know, some people are asking questions that are heartfelt. And I understand, I understand where they're coming from.
Just one little comment, Mr. Chairman.
The question is to the board members, do we continue with the public hearing tonight? Or do we, do we have another meeting in two weeks?
I just want to clarify, I will not be available in two weeks.
Mr. Chair, it's Jay.
Go ahead, Mr. Isaac.
Yep. I, I would just say that I think based on what the planning director stated as far as a timeline, we're not pigeonholed into having, having a meeting at two weeks at this point. We could bring this up and hear it during the next meeting. If it's not resolved at that meeting, then we're, we can set a special meeting. I definitely think you're right, though, in that we need to allow due process and allow the public to speak. No matter what the outcome is, we need to allow the public to speak and just do what you did at the beginning of the meeting. Ask for them not to be redundant.
Yeah, we're trying to do our due diligence. And that's what I want the public to understand. This board is not trying to rush through this process. And I don't believe the developer is trying to rush through this process. So, yeah, I mean, I just want to hear from the board. Do, do we want to take on some more questions? Or do we want to just go to, just push this to the next meeting? Because right now we're at 10:23. Push it to the next meeting.
Push it to the next meeting. Push it to the next meeting.
Okay.
We still have four callers and then we still have to deliberate against the nine planning board members if they have any questions or wish to bring up any points. So you're looking at 15 more speakers.
Yeah, I have many questions, so.
So even at five minutes apiece, that's an hour, another hour, 75 minutes.
Well, I wasn't planning on, uh, I wasn't planning on finishing tonight, but I didn't know if you wanted to take on some more questions. But I hear you loud and clear. So why don't we, and when's our next meeting, Mr. Crossman? The date?
Uh, next meeting is September 23rd.
September 23rd.
And Mr. Coloney, will you be able to make that meeting?
I'll be a little older, but yes.
No, I, I, I just, you know, because Mr. Coloney can't make the night, I, I, I don't think it's fair to have a special meeting on that night. He's devoted two nights to these public hearings.
I agree. I totally. So we're going to keep public hearing open. And I guess I'll ask a motion to continue to September 23rd.
Motion to continue to September 23rd.
Oh, second.
Second.
Uh, second by Mr. Pocelli.
Hey Chairman, are we going to listen to those other four people that are on the line or are we just going to cut them off? What?
We're going to continue to the September 23rd. There's been a motion and a second.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll poll the board. Mr. Mattson?
Aye.
Mr. Ozinkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Rayes?
Aye.
Mr. Kenny?
Aye.
Mr. Pocelli?
Aye.
Ms. Lukowicz? I think she left us.
She said aye. She's just muted.
Sorry, Ms. Lukowicz. Mr. Coloney?
Aye.
And Mr. Chairman, Chairman Flynn says aye. So on that note, we're going to push this to September 23rd.
At 6:30.
At 6:30, yes. I will be closer at the agenda.
Check the agenda.
Six.
Ross.
Six. Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Have a good night. Second it.
By Carl Mattson, second by Mr. Rayes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Night.